Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Deschutes County, and it happens to be August 17, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will open it up to citizen input for something that is not on our agenda. I don't see any blue sheets filled out. Stephanie, is there anybody on Zoom with a raised hand?
No.
No? Okay. No one's here on Zoom? Okay. What about our consent agenda?
I'll move consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Couple notes. So the first one is the resolution adopting a supplemental budget, and these are the well funds, the dollars to Neighbor Impact. So this is for our budget, so hopefully the money's already to them. But johnc@neighborimpact.org is the email if you're interested. I just sent two connections to him, people that, you know, were asking about support. So it was really good to talk to John, and then, you know, he said just send anything. So this is for all of us as commissioners, anybody listening. But yeah, send requests to johnc@neighborimpact.org. And then also, I'd like to, you know, thank the two community members joining us for the dog board supervisors. So, and welcome back Carol Martin on that dog board.
And for the record, we all are trying to acquire funds for well issues in 2022. Working on that currently. So the $585,200 was actually supposed to be for wells that had issues last year, and not new wells, but old wells. And so we are reaching out to acquire more funding for our community. So with that, Commissioner DeBon.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And the Chair of the chair for the consent agenda.
And since we're talking about trying to secure additional funds for well deepening, for, you know, to basically keep, keep homes habitable so that we're not losing from our housing stock. Traditionally, the major source of funding for this work has been the Community Development Block Grant Program. So we should put on our agenda to advocate for adequate and full funding for the Community Development Block Grant Program to provide federal support for that work.
Okay. All right. I believe we now want to go.
Just what does that look like, writing a letter to Senator's office or something?
Yeah. Both our, our members of the Senate and our members in the House just.
Well, I mean, maybe that's a good letter, a couple paragraphs explaining, you know, we have a long history of a water table going down, drought, you know, we have a system in place for helping distribute to the most needy grants and loans. I'm just thinking that let's.
And the importance of the Community Development Block Grant Program to supporting this work historically in Deschutes County, and would like to see that continue. Could be as simple as that.
Yeah. So Nick, can you help us, just as an action item to follow up creating that letter? Because there's, you know, and then we can figure out what it looks like and finalize something.
Yeah.
I was actually being approached by the state for funding. So because that's where the 585,000 came from, was from the state of Oregon. Let's hope we can get more funding. All right. So now, do we have any other items at this moment? Anyone? No? So are we going to then adjourn to go upstairs, come back down for our 2:00 hearing?
You could take a recess now, return at 2:00 for the public hearing, and we could go upstairs for a.
Executive.
Exactly. Okay. We'll run upstairs for executives. Taking a recess now, Stephanie. Tell we'll be back before 2 PM.
The Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners meeting today, August 17, 2022. We're now at action item number five, which is a public hearing. And we will open the public hearing process with a statement. This is the time and place set for a hearing regarding file number 247-21-001043-P-A-1044-Z-C. It's a request for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the designation of the subject properties from agricultural AG to rural residential exception area, RREA, and a corresponding zone change to rezone the subject properties from exclusive farm use EFU to rural residential, and that's RR10. To the staff, the staff will outline the hearing procedures that will be followed. And welcome, Haley. I see you on the screen, so thank you so much.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioner Adair. Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen right now, get my PowerPoint up. All right. Again, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner Adair. For the record, my name is Hallie King. I am associate planner with Deschutes County Planning Division. The hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a quasi judicial application requesting approval of a plan amendment and zone change for property encompassing approximately 710 acres. The applicant in this case, 710 properties, again, is requesting approval for a rezone to change from exclusive farm use to rural residential, as well as a plan amendment from agriculture to rural residential exception area. All testimony this afternoon shall be directed to the hearing's body, and at the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate towards a decision, continue the public hearing, or deliberations to a date and time certain, or decide to leave the written record open. And I'm briefly going to go over sort of the steps this afternoon for the hearing procedure. First, I'm going to explain our Zoom in-person and telephone participation options. Then staff will provide a brief report regarding the application and quasi judicial process. Then the applicant will have an opportunity to present their testimony and evidence regarding the application. Then we will move into public testimony. Any interested persons or agencies here today will have an opportunity to present testimony and evidence. Then the applicant will have an opportunity to present any rebuttal testimony based on what they heard. And lastly, if the hearing's body requests, staff can provide any closing comments. And I do want to note that the Board, we had a work session on this item on June 29th, and at that work session, the Board established, agreed upon, set time limits for testimony this afternoon, and I've listed those here on my presentation slide. Just to reiterate that, the applicant will have 30 minutes for their initial presentation. Then for the general public, they will have three minutes for testimony, and any agencies joining us today will have 10 minutes. And then lastly, 10 minutes will be afforded to the applicant for their rebuttal testimony. One other just procedural note that we discussed at the June 29th hearing and was included in the notice of public hearing is the public hearing, we're kind of holding this in two parts today. So obviously, we're having the part that's starting here at 2:00 PM, and we'll go through the public testimony portion. Then the Board will recess and reconvene at 5:30 PM to take any additional testimony for folks, you know, who are maybe working during this time or weren't able to testify in this afternoon portion. Again, to comply with House Bill 2560, we are holding this meeting in a hybrid format, so we've got both in-person participation available as well as Zoom and remote participation. For those folks joining us in person, once we get to that portion of the hearing, the chair will ask for folks to raise their hand and invite them up to the podium at the front there with the microphone, and we ask that folks please state your first and last name and mailing address for the record prior to giving your testimony. For those joining us via Zoom, I do have on this screen here the links to where you can find the Zoom login information. If anyone's watching on the webcast and wants to join on Zoom, we've got them posted in a few different places. Again, at the Board's hearing page, the URL is noted there on the website, and we also have our project website for the application, which includes the Zoom login within the notice of public hearing that was sent out on June, or July 21st. Just to jump real quick into Zoom, I know folks are probably really familiar with Zoom at this point, but those joining us are either categorized as attendees or panelists. Attendees, you are not on audio or video, you're not being recorded, but once we, our producer elevates folks to a panelist during your testimony portion, that's when you'll have the ability to unmute your microphone and share your video screen if you wish to do that. And again, once you're elevated to a panelist, you will be recorded for your testimony. Once your testimony concludes, you will be then reassigned as an attendee, again, not being recorded but still being able to watch the meeting. A couple of important tools for those on Zoom is going to be the mute button, which is on the bottom left-hand side of your black ribbon. That's going to be what you'll use to mute and un-mute your microphone once you're elevated to a panelist. And then right next to that is the video, again, the stop and start video. And then lastly, the raised hand function. That's going to be important for folks. Once we get to that part of the hearing, that will be the way you will notify our producer if you would like to speak during the public testimony portion. You will hit that button, and it'll notify us on our end. For folks joining us on the phone, which we may not, it doesn't look like we have any, but just real quick, to mute and unmute from your phone, you would hit star six on your keypad, and then the raised hand function, again, is star nine on the keypad. So for those joining via telephone, those are the two important functions you'll want to note if you'd like to provide testimony this afternoon. Again, so once we're ready for that public testimony portion, we will ask folks to raise their hand, and our producer will elevate each person and will, you know, kind of repeat that process until each public, member of the public who wishes to testify has haven't had a chance to do so. So that'll be all, and I'll remind folks again, once we get to that portion of the raised hand function for Zoom and star nine on your keypad. And again, just to reiterate the order of testimony this afternoon, the applicant will go first after staff report, then we will move on to those joining us in person, members of the public, any agencies here today, and then we'll move on to those joining us remotely via Zoom or phone. And then again, the applicant will have their opportunity for rebuttal testimony. And this afternoon, it is our responsibility as staff and on behalf of the Board to conduct an orderly hearing. As part of that, we will be reminding folks of these time limits that have been established and ask that folks providing testimony are respectful of the time limits as well as in regard to any oral testimony given this afternoon. And in addition to any oral testimony, if folks have any written testimony to be handed in, you can certainly do so. You can either hand it to staff, and we have Nick Leelak, our county administrator there, who can take those materials in, or if you want to submit any digital comments, you can email those directly to myself. My email address is listed here on the screen. And if you are sending an email comments, and they are more than 20 pages in length, include any color figures that need to be printed in color, or any documents larger than eight and a half by 11, we do ask that you submit a physical copy. It doesn't necessarily have to be today, but you can drop that off at the Community Development Department offices to my attention. And again, that's if you are submitting something digitally, but it exceeds those standards listed here on the page, and that's so that we can include everything in our physical file for the application record. And at this time, I'm going to ask if there's any objections to the format of the hearing. If yes, if you're in the room, please physically raise your hand, or if you're joining us remotely, please use the raised hand function. And I'll ask Commissioner Adair and Stephanie, our producer, if you're seeing any hands raised in the audience.
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
I have none.
I have nothing to disclose, and I can proceed.
And I have none to disclose, and I can proceed. So is there anyone with a raised hand, Stephanie, on the screen? I don't see any raised hands in the room. All right. So does any party wish to challenge any commissioner, member of the hearing's body based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? Do we see anything raised now, Stephanie? No? No, I don't see anything in the room. As no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing, does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? None? Okay. Seeing none, the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report. Thank you, Hallie.
Thank you, Commissioner Adair. I will jump back in. Okay, so as we've stated earlier in the proceedings, again, this application is involving a quasi judicial comprehensive plan amendment and zone change for 710 acres consisting of about nine different tax lots. And this map here circles the property, general property area in red, just to give some context of location as it relates to City of Redmond, Terrebonne, and Highway 126 along the southern side. Again, the request is to go from agriculture to rural residential exception area with a corresponding zone change exclusive farm use to RR10. The applicant seeks to demonstrate that the subject property does not meet the state definition of agricultural land. The applicant has provided a soil study in the record which concludes that the property contains 71% class seven and eight soils, as well as other record items indicating the property cannot be reasonably used for farm use as defined in state statute. And the next slide here is just a zoomed-in view of the properties here outlined in red, and also to show just kind of the surrounding zoning, surrounding character of the area. And this map is also printed out full-size in the hearing room this evening. I do want to note that staff provided a staff memo to the Board on August 10th, and since the publishing of that staff memo, I've received at least over 120 additional public comments to the record regarding this application, including both those in support and those in opposition to the application. And we have uploaded comments received as of about 1:00 PM today to the record. I believe I've seen a few more come into my emails since then, so we'll get those uploaded as soon as we can to the record. And again, I've linked here the application record, which can be accessed on the deschutes.org Community Development Department webpage.
Haley, this is Commissioner DeBonne. There's an email at board@deschutes.org that's commented on all our mailboxes, and yeah, maybe Nick has access to it here, but there's, looks like there's just a few bits of testimony in there, too. So they may be duplicate, they may have routed through other places also, but I was able to find some in there.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yeah, Whitney Hale has been forwarding those to me as they've come in, just to the Board as well. So we'll make sure we get everything that came in to that specific email if we don't already have it. So thank you. Next, I just wanted to note a couple of questions that came up at the June 29th work session. One was regarding the status of Buckhorn Road as it intersects with Oregon Highway 126, and specifically related to federal lands assistance program grant funds. And I did confirm with our road department director, Chris Doty, that the county has applied to the Federal Highway Administration for some grant funding to improve a 1.6-mile portion of Buckhorn Road. And you can see on this map here that that came from the road department, and in red is the portion that's highlighted that's under this grant application. And I did highlight in blue, blue purple here, the subject properties that we're discussing tonight, just to kind of give everyone some context of proximity and that type of thing. And per Chris Doty, the application is still under review, but results are expected later this year with potential road improvements several years into the future. Second, we had, there was a request for some kind of general information regarding water, water use in the area, and county staff, we did invite a representative from the Oregon Water Resources Department, Kyle Gorman, who I believe is attending this hearing this afternoon. So we did invite him, you know, as an agency representative to provide any kind of general information about, about water use or about any permitting. Next, I wanted to go over just the review process for these quasi judicial plan amendment zone changes. The step is a hearings officer hearing and recommendation, and for this particular application, the initial hearing was held on April 19, 2022, with the hearings officer issuing a recommendation of approval on June 2, 2022. The next step is what we are here today, is the Board of County Commissioners' public hearing, and the potential deliberations, excuse me, to follow or to follow it on a date specific. And finally, we would move on to a final decision from the Board of County Commissioners, either to approve or deny the application and ordinances to follow rendering whatever decision is made. And lastly, then, just kind of the next steps for the Board this afternoon, these are sort of the four options as the hearing would conclude today. So one is you can continue the public hearing to a date and time certain. Second is you could close the oral portion of the hearing but leave the written record open to a date and time certain. Third would be to close the hearing and commence deliberations. Or lastly would be to close the hearing and schedule deliberations for a date and time to be determined. And with that, that concludes my brief staff report, but want to open it up to any questions that the Board may have for staff before we move into the public testimony portion of the hearing.
Thank you, Hallie. Thank you for that. Are there any questions at this moment?
Just a discussion of posting the meeting properly. Is it time for confirmation, or is there any?
We're working on that to find out exactly whether the appropriate notice was provided so that there wouldn't be a need for a subsequent hearing.
And that's just a procedural discussion, just procedural.
Correct. Yeah, and obviously, folks, a lot of folks got notice of the hearing. We have a lot of folks here today, but we want to make sure that that was done appropriately. We're checking on that.
Thank you.
So that's still under review at this moment?
Yes, as we're talking, I got a laptop that worked brought to me, so I can keep working on it because the one I brought didn't work.
Okay, thank you.
I had one, one, just kind of factual information question. Maybe CDD are the right people to ask this, but it may be an assessor question. The hearings officer recommendation identified one of the parcels within this holding as receiving EFU tax deferral. And it gave a number, but I wasn't able to line it up with the matrix, the little table that went through all of the. that went through all of the parcels. So I couldn't tell whether it was one of the big parcels, or whether it was one of the small ones. But, you know, in the hearings officer's recommendation, there was this parcel identified that was receiving EFU tax deferral, but was also identified as not being farmed. So a couple of questions about that are, one, which one of these parcels is that? And two, is there any kind of process retroactively to reconcile that for the county as this moves forward? I mean, if someone is receiving EFU tax deferral, but they're not actually farming, what should happen with that?
I'll certainly let Haley answer the first question, Commissioner, but the second question is, the assessor's office requires annual submissions from folks that are in deferral, and so they review those annually. And then I believe they have a cycle, I want to say, every couple, two or three years, where they'll go out and actually put eyes on the property as well to be able to confirm. So that's a separate issue outside of land use. It doesn't really, it's interesting to note, but it wouldn't be the first parcel in the county getting farmed deferral that might not be getting farmed. Occasionally, some of those occur, but with the annual reporting requirements and the cycle for actual onsite inspections, I think those are ultimately caught. And I believe there's some sort of a clawback provision if some parcels receive deferral when they weren't entitled to it.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, it is primarily an assessment and tax question, but I think it's actually somewhat relevant to the question of whether this is, if this is farm use or not, you know, because maybe the fact that this was receiving tax deferral indicates an intention to have farmed it, but then not following through. But, you know, the applicant can unpack that a little bit for us, maybe, when they present.
Thanks, Dave, and thanks, Commissioner Chang. And I'll just jump in real quick, and I'll have the applicant to confirm this, but it does appear there is only one parcel, and this has 710 acres, receiving farm tax deferral, and it's going to be tax lot 300, and the address is 10311 Northwest Cointer. So yeah, I'm seeing the same thing, but we can certainly have the applicant maybe touch on that.
It's the one with 120.6 acres. It's the third one listed on the chart.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Okay, I do have a question. Is Kyle Gorman in the room to testify today? I know you mentioned his name. I just, I don't have--
He may be online.
Okay. Well, I just, is he online? Do you see Stephanie?
No.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be aware that if he was available to testify, we wanted to give him some priority, so. All right. If he does show up, Stephanie, you'll let me know. Thank you so much. So are we ready, then, to hear from the applicant?
Chair?
Yes?
When you want to hear from the applicant, I have the clock set up for the three minutes for the public testimony. I'm sure it's not too complicated to figure out how to make the time for 30 minutes, but I don't know--
But you don't know how?
I will use my three for the first 30 minutes when the applicant provides their application. And if it's helpful, I'll just, you know, give a five-minute and a one-minute warning for the applicant, and then I see that the agencies would follow the applicant. I see they would have 10 minutes, I would do the same thing for them. And then for the public, you'll have the benefit of the clock of seeing how much time is available, if that works for the board.
That sounds like an excellent idea. Mr. Leelak, thank you so much. Thank you, Nick.
It's safer that way, right?
Yes, safer, yes. All right. Okay, so would the applicant like to start using their 30 minutes then?
Thank you, commissioners, for hearing our application today. Appreciate your time. While Ken Katsaroff will present the--
Oh, could you please identify--
Oh, I'm so sorry. Dale Stockamp, 10325, Cointer Avenue, Northwest Cointer Avenue, Redmond, Oregon. Apologize for that.
Thank you.
While Ken Katsaroff will be presenting the technical and legal aspects of our application today, I thought it would be good to introduce my partners and our vision for this property. Our partners are Charles Thomas and Robert Turner, as well as myself, are Aldischutes County homeowners, as is our research and development manager, Mark Stockamp. Given our passion and love for the central Oregon community, we wanted to make sure we did things right with this property. And so we spent more than, like, the last year, over a year, engaging with technical and environmental experts in their fields, many of them here today, to really determine what is the best use for our property. Our vision for our property is we would love to share the amazing panoramic views from this property with more people. We would like to strive to increase the supply of badly-needing housing in central Oregon, but do it in a way that strikes a balance with nature. We would like to create a predominantly self-sustaining community by relying on solar technology to the greatest extent and other sustainable technologies. We would like to create great economic benefits for this region. And most important, and this is really where our passion has been from early on, we want to benefit the broader Deschutes County community. We're going to be designating first and significant proceeds from whatever happens with our property to nonprofits that are serving the needs of hundreds, if not thousands, of people in the broader Deschutes County community. At the end of the day, when we evaluate how we're going to measure if we're successful or not in what we do, we want to be seen as a great asset, not only to Deschutes County, but also to the broader central Oregon community. I want to thank all that wrote letters of support for us, and thank the supporters who came to speak today in person. One person who dearly wanted to be here, who could not be, was Bev Klarno, who wrote a letter of support that I think made it into the record. She was willing to have it read today, but for expediency, I'll just provide it to the hearings officer. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ken. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Ken Katsaroff, Schwab Williamson &amp; White here for the applicant, obviously. I appreciate your time today. I'm going to talk very quickly, because I think I've got about 27 minutes left. So I'll do my best to make the time. So, you know, we're here today for plan amendment and zone change, obviously. I was on the site yesterday, and this is a pretty good representation of it. It's a lot of rocks. So I'm going to hit high levels as best I can, and then provide any other additional responses in writing as the board may request if the record remains open. So again, as Dale said, to figure out how to use this, there we go. The team here has been working on this proposal for about a year, and they haven't been taking it lightly. We've been working with a lot of different, really statewide, experts. And there's only about four or five people that even can do the soil analysis that we've done on this particular piece of property. Mr. Rabies is one of the best, and he's sitting right over here if there's specific questions from the board today. We've also worked with Dr. Wendy Wenti, who the county has also worked with, and Chris Clomell for traffic. We've hired GSI to do a water report and understand what water impacts could be on the particular property. And we've gotten really far, thought really a lot about this property, and even are starting to look at how we deal with potential wildfire, and how do we get in front of that? So the point is to say we've been really mindful, and we want the board to understand that. This is not, you know, a very quick application that we threw together. We've been working on it for a year, or more, actually. As I just got an email from Liz, I'm reminded that the property is not in tax deferral, just so you know, and there is one tax lot that was disqualified from tax deferral back in 2014. And basically, there's a penalty where you catch up over 10 years for those taxes. So it's not in tax deferral. There's not a single parcel that is. So hopefully, that answers your question. Okay? There we go. Moving on, I went too far. Again, we've already seen kind of an aerial, but from the staff report, here it is again. What you'll kind of see on the kind of northwest areas, there's kind of a snake line, and you can really see the change of topography. You can also see it on the southeast side of it. But I want to make it clear here, there is a significant topographical change here. When I say significant, we're talking about 200 to 250 feet in a very short time period. So those are the topo lines. Why that matters is that this is a plateau, and it means that what happens on the top of this plateau, the impacts to surrounding properties are pretty low. We're not talking about a, you know, 30 or 40-foot difference, we're talking about a 200 to 250-foot difference. And that matters when it comes to how we're looking at impacts to potential other properties. Now, we've looked at kind of the site as a whole, and move on to, as Haley already showed, the area zoning. This map is taken directly from dial, and what it shows is the, anything that's not green is essentially an exceptionary already. Rural residential, MUA 10, which is a rural residential zone. And the blue, interestingly enough, is a destination resort overlay, which means the county has looked at this particular property and already determined that it was ripe for potential development. Significantly higher density than we would like to do, but I just think that that's important to note. What I'm going to show you, what is not shown on this map, but what is shown in the map over here in the corner that we've provided separately, and we have other printouts, is, and I'm going to stand up for a second to point something out really quickly. What we've done on this map is we've also addressed and identified all of the other pieces of property that have had quasi-judicial land use applications, like a non-farm dwelling, that take land essentially out of the EFU and make it a non-farm parcel, or are the BLM parcels. So everything that is this light green and yellow, et cetera, these are properties that although may be zoned EFU, have been already essentially taken out of a farm use for a non-farm parcel, non-farm dwelling. Okay? So that's important so that we really understand the land use pattern of this area. It's very rural residential, and we're wanting to do something consistent with that. Okay? Where am I? This is the comprehensive plan policies, and I'm sorry if I'm going really quickly, but I'm trying to get through time here. What this is meant to show is that the comprehensive plan right now specifically permits landowners who do not qualify under state law as agricultural land to seek a rezone of their property. And that's really important, because people rely upon what the comprehensive plans say. And if it is the determination of this board that they want to rethink how that happens, then they really need to do it from a, not a quasi-judicial or legislative land use application like this is, and really look at the comprehensive plan as a whole, which the county is starting to do. And that's important. I don't know if the slide I want, nope. So I want to talk about one more thing before I get to this, which is we really think that this particular application supports comprehensive land use planning as a whole. One of the things that's important to note about this property is it's big. It's got 710 acres. There's also about nine lots of record already. And how the current rules work in the county and in state law, that would allow the property to qualify already for about 20 non-farm dwellings. Okay? And so any person could come in and apply for those, and they would have to be granted if we met the criteria. And importantly, Luba has recently decided that the needed housing statute, which means only clear and objective standards that can apply to housing, applies outside of urban growth boundaries. And so that means currently, we already qualify for about 20 homes. And so we're asking for a little bit more density, which is 71 homes and 710 acres. And why I'm saying it supports planning as a whole is that means we can come in with an actual subdivision application and deal with all of the range of planning issues that people tend to care about. Restricting water use, how are you going to care for wildlife? How are you going to care for traffic impacts, et cetera? And we can do that all in one application, as opposed to a bunch of willy-nilly, non-farm separate applications that must be approved by the county. Okay? So I think that's important in context for this application. I don't know where I am on time, but I'm going to keep going. So when we're looking at the definition of agglam in state law, kind of the litmus test is soils. In this case, we have 71% class seven and eight soils, which are pretty bad. And this is just the definition in state law, but I think what's important to see is the next, which is what class seven and class eight soils mean. Class seven soils mean that they're unsuitable for cultivation. Class eight is you're basically precluded from growing a crop. And because a picture's worth a thousand words when it comes to soils in particular, you know, this is what the property looks like. It's a lot of rock. I'm just going to show like three more pictures, just because we all like rocks. I don't know, I'm a rock collector. I got them from all over the country, all over the world. Makes for heavy luggage. This is what we want the property to look like when we're done with it. We want to have low-density, 71 houses on 710 acres and stewards of the land. So I'm going to move beyond here, but this is what our vision is. Okay, let's get into the nitty-gritty here, goal three. This is the goal three test for suitable for farm use. You look at a bunch of different considerations, and no one is dispositive of the others, but it deals with soil fertility, which also is the soils analysis and type. Suitability for grazing, we'll get there. Climactic, existing and future availability of water, that's obviously a big one here. Existing land use patterns, we've already talked about that. And then the technological and energy inputs is something that has really been identified in state law to meet all of the costs of actually trying to do a farm use. So one more piece that matters about this test is the definition of farm use. We, in the public, sometimes thinks that farm use and agricultural use are synonymous, and they're not. Under Oregon state law, farm use is a defined term. And it's a defined term when we're looking at identifying what should be classified and protected as agricultural land. And that definition is really small up there, but it is, and I can't read it, but it essentially says you have to be doing something for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit. So you have to be having a cattle operation where you are doing it to make money. It's not the instance where you have an agricultural use because you have one cow that you're growing or raising for your family, or a llama, or whatever. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. All I am saying that the definition in state law to protect something as gulf three agricultural land means you have to be doing a farm use, which is for the primary purpose of making money using the land, and the land has to support it itself. The other thing that this case, which is from the Supreme Court of Oregon, very clearly articulates, is that the expenses matter. So it's the idea that, well, you bought the land, it's rocky, too bad. That doesn't matter. It's how you actually get the land, how you actually get it profitable. And in this case, the amount of inputs that it would require to even attempt to make a farm use for profitability simply make it unreasonable. And that's the test, okay? I'll give you one quick number here, which is the idea of water. We priced out before our last hearing the idea of having enough irrigation water for just one pivot, one pivot of 135 acres. And if the water was even available, it would be about 2.6 million bucks. That's if it was even available to purchase and to transfer to the land. And so we also looked at, okay, if you did three pivots, which is maybe what you could put on a plateau there, we're looking at over $7 million. That's unrealistic, okay? So I just want to throw that out there. So the question about suitability for grazing, I'm not going to leave it here, I'm going to go to the next one. In our application, we used a really conservative number and said you could make up to maybe $45,000 in grazing, and our expert said, no, that's actually not correct, it's actually less, it's about $15,000. And then the state came in and said it's even less than that. And in a good year, it's maybe 5,000. Or, sorry, in a good year, it's maybe 10,000, and in a bad year, it's 5,000. The property taxes in 2020 alone for this property, which is not in farm deferral, is over 15,000. And that doesn't even consider any of the inputs required. Bringing in feed, because the land can't support growing its own feed. Bringing in water, transporting cattle, anything that you'd have to do to make that good year $10,000 is not included in that number. So grazing is simply not something that we can support on this property. Next, water usage. We had GSI run an analysis of what it would look like under a worst-case scenario of 71 homes using the full amount of exempt water that you could use. It would be about 200 acre-feet of water each year. And what they determined was that it was unlikely to have any interference for local wells. They did an analysis of how the water moves, they pulled well logs, they looked at all of this and said interference is unlikely. And that's at 200 acre-feet. And then I saw Mr. Gorman walk in, so I'll let him speak to this, but we also asked Mr. Gorman, what would this look like? What would it look like if we did homes? And he said, well, you're probably looking at about 80 acre-feet of water, not 200. In all reality, I think he probably assumed no half-acre irrigation, which is allowed under an exempt use, so it's fine. And what would three pivots look like? And that would be almost 720, I think, acre-feet of water. So a lot more water than if we were going to just use it for homes. I just want to be clear here, there's an idea sometimes that agricultural or farm use, that's where we should use our water, but it's a lot more impact. And in this case, a residential use isn't any impact, and that assumes we could even get water for a farm use. And I would submit that this board has already decided previously that it's not an accepted farm practice to water rocks. Okay? It's just not. I'd also note that I believe soil is about 14 inches at maximum on this property, which leaves not very much room to actually cultivate crops, whereas there is actual topsoil, it's very limited. Whereas there is actual topsoil, it's very limited. Okay. Fire protection, again, we're working on this, we've got a plan, and we want to do better when we get a subdivision approval, hopefully too. We really want to address this, we're really mindful of it. And one of the measures is to limb up junipers, remove a bunch of junipers, and that's both going to help for wildlife and wildfire risk and water usage. We all know that, and there's information in the record of this, that junipers use a lot of water. So we're planning to thin that. I'm now going to turn it over Wendy, to Wendy. I don't know how much time we have, one second. Oh, we're good. We're doing real good. So Wendy, if you want to, yeah, I'll turn to your slide here, and then happy to answer any questions.
Good afternoon. So I'm Wendy Winty. I am an ecologist and a wildlife biologist. I work for a natural resources consulting firm called Mason, Bruce &amp; Gerard, which is headquartered in Portland. Should I give my address, mailing address?
No, that's fine. I'm sure we could look it up.
Yes. But anyway, the team brought me on as a wildlife biologist to go out on the site and take a look at the habitat that was present on the site and assess that, and then help them think about ways that they could, you know, reduce impacts or design their development with, while considering the impacts that it may have on wildlife. And I've just listed some conservation measure ideas here on this slide based on my assessment. So the site was pretty much covered entirely with juniper woodland habitat. It's various stages of succession. There are phases that that successionally goes through as you're transferring from a bunch grass community to juniper woodland. And this site is entirely covered with juniper woodland in various stages. The photograph was an old growth juniper that was in, there are some pockets of old growth juniper out on the site, which are interesting. But I was thinking about conservation measures that they could apply while they're thinking about the plan of development. And so one thing that would be an easy thing to do would be to make sure that any new fences that go in that had, that were associated with the development would be wildlife friendly. So that's a WA zone fence standard. It essentially sets it up so that you're using smooth wire, and it's only, there's a gap at the bottom so that animals can go underneath, and it's not too tall for animals to get over the fence. So there's that, which is in your own standards. Also, the group was open to not having structures below that northwestern rimrock. So you can see there's a rimrock that runs along sort of the northern corner, border, not corner, but the border of the property.
Yeah, I'll go back all the way to the front map, sorry. Don't get dizzy.
Yeah, you can see it there. It's topographically pretty distinct, but it runs along that northwestern border of the triangular shape of the property. And down below that, that's an area where I saw a lot of use by, like deer trails and, you know, the deer use was diffused throughout the entire property. But that area is a good protected area down below the rimrock, and it also gives animals access to the adjacent ag lands. So that was an area of particular importance from a wildlife perspective. So I suggested that they limit the development up on the top of, you know, the topographically flat area, and leave that area undeveloped. Ken, could you pop us back to my list?
Yes, sorry. Don't get dizzy. Oh, no, I broke it.
Uh-oh. Will it go?
Uh, I don't, there we go. I'm going to go all the way back, but slower this time.
So the previous slide, it talked about cutting all junipers, removing all junipers less than 12 feet or something like that?
Yeah, so there's a, you can manage vegetation, actually, it's the last one here, managing for wildlife habitat value. So if you take out younger juniper that are coming in, they are, they're sort of the early successional stage where you're converting from shrub and bunch grass from that habitat type into a juniper woodland. So if you go in and you clear out those young juniper, you can actually drive pockets of habitat back to the earlier successional stages. And then while you do that, you do want to maintain some of these older growth junipers. Those provide cavities and food sources and cover for a variety of wildlife species that could occupy parts of the property. And so you can go in and actually make a plan for the site that's site specific for how you would leave pockets of habitat.
Would there be other tree species that would traditionally be there or aim to be there? I'm thinking ponderosa.
Yeah, so prehistorical human use, this was probably a bunch grass, shrub step habitat type.
So, yeah, it was never large pondos or anything. That's what I was wondering, okay.
Very thin soils.
So a good state would be having grass and, yeah.
Native bunch grass, yeah.
Those same juniper treatments would likely dramatically increase the productivity of the land for grazing.
Yeah, I don't want to speak to that from a wildlife perspective. But from a wildlife perspective, when you are increasing the mosaic, you know, the layout of the property and you're introducing these pockets of earlier successional stages, that of course provides more variety for wildlife species. You'll get a different suite of species that utilize that versus the juniper woodland. And then some that cross over like deer and elk. Some other components of this were thinking about having seasonal trail closures, if they do have trails, then if they are concerned about affecting overwintering deer, you can close sections of trails to keep people from going in there and disturbing the wildlife during certain periods of time. And then the no recreational use of off highway vehicles, that's a big one for disturbance. And I do note that the BLM trails that are nearby, when I was out on the site, I could hear and see use on the adjacent property. So definitely controlling any use of OHVs on the property would just reduce the amount of disturbance that's happening, particularly down underneath that, the rimrock. Yeah, and I think that's, those were the five points that I wanted to make, but I don't know if you have more slides?
If any more questions, otherwise I'm going to wrap a couple of things up.
That's good.
Well, I wanted to let you use your 30 minutes to say, give your presentation, but I do have, I have some questions.
Happy to answer them.
Is this an appropriate time? One of my questions is actually wildlife related, and it was as much a concern I wanted to state as a question. But as you may very well know, the county is in the process of updating its wildlife overlays right now, including a mule deer winter range overlay that includes a significant portion of this property. And when those overlays are adopted, and when the county sifts through the process of deciding what uses will be restricted, or what uses need to be, you know, take place in modified ways, one of the possibilities would be that, that any development that would happen within that mule deer winter range, instead of being something like one house every 10 acres, could be, you know, there could be a push to have something more like a clustered development. So I wanted to ask the applicant whether you've considered that as another way to substantially mitigate the impacts of this development on wildlife, kind of rural view sheds, you know, certainly depending on, you know, how you do the cluster development, the water consumption could be significantly less. So just with that in mind, is that a possibility for these acres if, you know, if you're allowed to proceed with a, you know, a rural residential development? Or are you really wedded to the kind of one house per 10 acres type approach?
Oh, Ken, I wanted to say that because he's asking you a question, I'm adding that time to your testimony time, just so you're not shortchanged.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So what I would say is that we're using the density figure just because it makes sense to talk about housing in a density perspective. Even if a WA zone was adopted to the property, development would still be allowed at the same density level. We're not seeking a density bonus, which actually may be available to us in either instance. And so what we've done in this particular case is looked at the WA zone as it exists today, and what provisions of it we are ready to adopt. I can't speak to yet whether or not we're going to come in with a cluster or anything else, because we don't have an approved rezone yet. So, you know, it's hard for us to look at that. What I can say is that we've been mindful about wildlife. We're going to continue to be mindful of wildlife. And if the property is overlaid with a WA zone, obviously we'll have to comply with it. And consistent with the code and state law, those, a cluster or a planned unit development, which are both allowed in WA zone, those are conditional uses, and the county can then condition them how they would reasonably like to. And so I just, all I can say is, it's a little too early for that conversation, because there's not really anything here that we can agree to or condition, because at the end of the day, this is a map amendment that is going to have to be adopted in the comprehensive plan. It's just, it's a little awkward to try to figure out how to do anything different. So when and if the county starts up its WA zone and mule deer inventory again, and has those conversations, that's great. But I would certainly ask that, this application has been kind of pending for a while, and given that that process hasn't really started yet, it could be another 12 months before the county actually completes those maps. And so we're going to be mindful, and we're going to keep working with Wendy, as we have since the very beginning, to make the best development under the best circumstances that we can. Hope that's an appropriate answer, because that's about all I can give.
That's a fine answer. I mean, I will kind of, just kind of build on my concern by saying, you know, I would look much more favorably on this proposal if it was coming forward after the overlay had been adopted, and I knew that county land use would be driving towards the most wildlife friendly development possible. So that the sequencing of all of these things is, it's, it is, it's not lost on me that if you submit your application for a development, you know, if we proceed with a rezone, you submit your application for a development prior to the time that the wildlife overlay is adopted, you will not have to design your development to address the requirements of the wildlife overlay. So.
Understood. The only response I could provide that may be separate than what I already did is, we clearly submitted this application when the county was, at that time, currently considering doing the WA zone, and has shifted that a little bit. So I don't want to say it wouldn't necessarily be fair to penalize the applicant for the county shifting that process, but I would note that, and again, you have our commitment, because we've done it for a year already, that we're going to continue to working with Wendy to build the best development we can.
Thank you. Okay. So that was, that was the wildlife overlay question. This will be another one of those, well, we're talking about an application for, you know, a zone change and a plan amendment. We're not talking about a development application. But the hearings officer, in making her recommendation, was basically only able to look at what was, what was being applied for, not able to speculate about the development that would come from, come from this, you know, come from a likely, come from an amendment and rezone approval. And so the traffic, the kind of traffic component of the hearings officer's recommendation was pretty thin. I would like to get a better sense from yourselves, since it is, depending on some of the things that Dave is researching, we may need to extend this hearing anyway. I would love to get a better sense from the road department, some of our transportation planning staff, on what comparable or similar type configurations, you know, 70 rural residential units on roads of these dimensions and these classifications, what kind of traffic, what kind of traffic impacts that has, and whether it's an issue or not an issue. But if you have any, if you can, if you have off the top of your head, oh, this is just like such and such neighborhood, and what you might be familiar with, and, you know, you can judge what, how bad the traffic is there, would welcome hearing about some of those.
Sure, so I can't give you a specific comparison, but what I can tell you is that we didn't just speculate. Under state law, we have to comply with the transportation planning rule, which means we have to actually look at what this is going to allow. So we specifically addressed 71 rural residential homes and what those traffic impacts are. And we provided a traffic report that does, that did that. We also consulted with county transportation planning staff, Peter Russell, and he agreed. And so at this particular point in time, the proposal for rezone, and not punting again, all I'm saying is that we analyzed exactly what we do want to do, which is 71 homes eventually, and that doesn't cause any significant additional impacts or changes. However, this is not the only bite of the apple that the county will get on this exact conversation. If, in fact, the county disagrees later, when we come in for a subdivision application, you can condition it and require additional improvements. But the analysis, which is for exactly what we were planning to do, 71 homes, was determined by our transportation engineer, county staff, and the hearings officer. But Chris, do you want to chime in at all, if you want to ask him specific questions?
Sure, if Chris wants to provide an answer.
Yes, Chris Clomo, with Clomo &amp; Associates. I'm a professional transportation engineer, and my business address is 2237 Northwest Torrey Pines Drive here in Bend, Oregon 97703. Is there a specific question you'd like me to answer, or do you just want me to discuss this project in general?
My specific question was, can you make comparisons to other areas with, you know, similar numbers of residential units, similar road type, road classifications and configurations, so that we could have a feel for what the traffic is going to be like in this area? But, you know, I have not, you know, I read the hearings officer's recommendations, I did not read your specific traffic report. So, I mean, if you want to share specifics from your traffics report, just to give people a sense of what kind of potential traffic impacts there will be from this development, that would be welcome.
Could I just interrupt for a second? We've now spent almost 10 minutes with these questions and answers, and I'm just wondering, Ken, are you done with your original presentation?
I'm happy to provide the.
I asked, I asked Ken if he was done before I started asking him questions. This is not, this is in, beyond his 30 minutes, the question part.
I know, I just wanted to know if he had actually used all of his time, because these people are coming up. So Nick, where are we at time wise with you?
I stopped the clock with six minutes and 34 seconds left when we started the.
So I haven't stopped my.
Knowing if we needed it or not.
If it's helpful, I have not stopped my time, and we're at 34 minutes, including all questions.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, all right, thank you. So Chris, do you want to go ahead then and make your presentation?
This particular project is a plan amendment and zone change application. So we are not looking at a specific development, but rather what we're looking at is reasonable worst case development of the property. In this case, 71 dwelling units is what was assumed. Now, keeping in mind that we are looking at what can be done with this property, kind of at this point in the process, meaning there is only one public access, or one access to the public roadway system today, and that is to the south. There is no access to any of the roadways to the north, to the east, to the west, anywhere else, only to the south. So for purposes of this analysis, that is where we had to assume all of the traffic is going. Now, it's fair to say that when this goes into a subdivision application, there may be a different assumption set that can be used when you're looking at specific development. And there may be connections to Buckhorn, as an example, or other connections further to the north. But those don't exist in, kind of in today's land use application. So as you, and I guess then to maybe ask, is there a comparative kind of rural residential subdivision to compare this to? subdivision to compare this to? I'm not sure I have off the top of my head an exact example. But what I can tell you is, you know, looking at, at the roadways out there, they certainly are able to accommodate any of the traffic that is going to be generated by this project. The volumes are quite low on most of those roads. And as a matter of fact, I mean, the, the, none of these roads are considered higher order county facilities, meaning they're not arterial or collector roadways on the county system. Again, this is focusing purely on the roadways to the south that this has connections to. And the only, for lack of a better term, higher order intersection is Highway 126 and 101st Street. And that particular intersection is already approved or improved with a westbound, well, let me see, a westbound right turn lane on the highway, on the state highway and an eastbound left turn lane. So those have already been provided at that intersection. It was found to operate at an acceptable ODOT mobility standard in the plan year, which is 2041. I, I guess I should also point out too, that as we do the evaluation for a plan amendment and zone change, we have to look at impacts in the plan year, which is 2041. We don't look at any near term, you know, type development impacts. It's all long term. So I, I guess it's really a worst case scenario. And that's, kind of that was the finding and county staff concurred with that.
That's, that's helpful. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, when I, when I first looked at this with the one road in, one road out that you mentioned up on a plateau, it's a different scale, but the first thing it made me think of was Cricket River Ranch. And having worked on community wildfire protection, planning efforts there, I, I can tell you that it was an extreme concern for that community to only have one access egress. So I, I, I hear you that there might be opportunities to create other, other connections, say directly to Buck, Buckhorn. My, my, my next question would be, well, you know, what's that going to cost and who's going to pay for it? But I, I would be, I, I would, I would be concerned only to, to put 71 homes into, onto a kind of peninsula or plateau like that and only have one access egress for, for wildfire.
That, that is a legitimate concern and I would anticipate that the applicant, you know, when going forward with a subdivision application is going to have to address that issue.
There's specific code provisions that we'll have to address related to access of the subdivision. So that will certainly be met. There's also requirements under the state building code, if I remember correct, that if we have more than, I think it's 30 homes, that you absolutely have to provide a secondary access point, which means if we can't get one, we already are kept. So some of these additional concerns are going to be dealt with. One of the things that I didn't highlight up there, a lot of fire planners also put together a shelter in place kind of plan and that's certainly going to be part of our, of our wildfire plan as well. Okay?
I, I do have more questions about agricultural use, but, you know, to, to work with Commissioner DeRis' concerns, I'm, I'm happy to wait until later to ask additional questions.
Thank you very much. So anyone else, Ken, from your team then you wanted to call up at this moment?
Not unless you have other questions you would like us to address at this point. Otherwise, we look at, we look forward to providing any rebuttal testimony that may be relevant and timely.
My question is the water usage. I believe you can have like half an acre around your house. Was that 80 number, was that including a half an acre around each of the 71 residences?
So I, I don't think so. I, I don't remember exactly how it was phrased in our conversation with Mr. Gorman.
Originally it was, like I think you said 200 and then you, it was changed to 80.
No, so we did our analysis as if it was about 200 acre feet, which specifically included all of that. And I believe that the comments that we received from Mr. Gorman were more related to if you just use traditional domestic water use. That said, there's no interference in, in either instance and we've specifically discussed as part of our team at a subdivision phase when we're looking at our CCNRs or other rules of reducing water use. So we, what, what we wanted to analyze for this board and for the hearings officer before was what is the worst case scenario of water use and does that impact other people? Are we going to have other wells having other problems? And the answer to that question from the expert is no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner Devon? Are we good? Okay. So shall we go then to additional testimony in the room?
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Are there state agencies here that would like to be allocated their 10 minutes at this moment?
Yep, Mr. Gorman's in the room now.
Does he want, would he like to, does he have a testimony he wants to provide? Thank you, Kyle.
The question was, would I like to?
Well, of course you, well.
Here's the microphone.
All right. Kyle Gorman with Oregon Water Resources Department. For the record, I'm the region manager, not the water master for the Deschutes Basin with the state of Oregon. I work, my region covers the Deschutes Basin, Klamath Basin, and Lake County. I don't know if the commission has, or do I have to give my address?
Well, we will, if you can just fill out a blue form a bit later.
Okay, a blue form.
We'll get you one, don't worry.
Okay. Thank you. If you had a specific question, I can answer those or if you just want me to talk in general terms about water resources or the law for a couple of minutes?
Talk in general, please.
Talk in general, okay.
Water is, you know, it's a big concern. We're hearing that wells, you know, approximately two years after piping happens, that they, you know, they have to be deepened here in central Oregon. And our residents are worried about that and this is your field of expertise.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, and so in the Deschutes Basin, we have a very robust aquifer. It supplies very clean, plentiful water for use in the basin. The recent years, we've seen exceptional drought conditions, which has an impact on water levels in the area. But, you know, stepping back, the, you know, if you want to kind of gauge levels of magnitude or, or water use in the basin and put those into scale perspectives, the early development in central Oregon was exclusively surface water and we have irrigation district diversions, quantities in the, you know, 500,000 to close to 800,000 acre feet of use from surface water in the basin. So keep that in mind, an acre foot is 326,000 gallons. As development occurred and well drilling technology and electricity became abundant, the basin development focused on groundwater. And so we have, you know, in excess of probably 50,000 acres of irrigated ground from groundwater in the entire basin. And also we rely on groundwater for municipal use. And so in the early 1990s, there was development occurring and there was questions about what the groundwater system in the Deschutes could sustain. And so the USGS and the municipalities and the state of Oregon and the Warren Springs tribes embarked on a groundwater study to, to look at the water budget of the basin, find out where the water's coming from, where it's going and, and how much, and how much is being used and what does the future look like? So that 19, 1990s groundwater study modeled the basin, looked at the orders of magnitude of use and of course, you know, the, the irrigation and the natural recharge in the system are the big users, municipal and irrigation from groundwater are next and then the domestic wells are last. And so under state law, anyone that has a rural property can drill a well and they're allowed, you know, a domestic, commercial, stock water in the order of 15,000 gallons per day for domestic use. And 15,000 gallons a day could easily supply 15 homes if the use is considered in-home, which domestic is. The other exception, or not exception, exemption from groundwater is half acre, non-commercial, and that's the important part, non-commercial lawn and garden. And so you can have a lawn, you can have your own garden, grow your vegetables. And that is the maximum allowed before you need a water right. And so if you need a water right, the, the basin in the groundwater study area, which encompasses the upper basin down to the madras area, mitigation is required. And so if anybody needs a water right in the basin, they have to mitigate their use. And the mitigation program, the genesis for it was protection of the scenic waterways in the lower Deschutes. And so anybody since 2002 needing a water right in the basin has to mitigate that use. And so what that means is the basin's consumptive use is essentially capped. It's, no new uses can occur. To mitigate, you have to take an existing use, retire it, put it in stream to offset your new use. With wells or exempt wells, the use is what we call de minimis. So it's a very small quantity and those at present are not required to mitigate. And so if somebody has a rural property, they're completely legal to drill a well and then use those exempt uses. So half acre or less. In this analysis, I was asked, you know, what's the relative impact between irrigation and domestic use? So the analysis, I, all I said was that in-home use, and I even used my own water use for my home in Redmond of ranges when I don't, when the lawn isn't watered, you know, I use 200 gallons a day for laundry showers for four adults. And then when the, when the spicklers go on for my yard, I use about 2,000 gallons. So there's a huge difference between if you have outdoor irrigation versus domestic use that's inside the home.
Kyle, is that for half an acre?
No, no, I don't have a half acre.
No, I mean, I was just wondering.
Yeah, I was just, what I'm getting at is that if use is restricted to in the home, it's a very small use compared to outdoor watering. Outdoor watering is in central Oregon, in any arid area, is by far the, the majority of water use. And that, you know, whether that's a agri, alfalfa field or a yard, outdoor watering uses a lot of water. In this area here, I did a quick survey of how many acres are irrigated in the Lower Bridge area, Big Falls Ranch. There's in excess of 2,000 acres of ground irrigated from groundwater. And then I took.
That's not correct. It's 1,000 irrigated acres. I'm from Big Falls Ranch. He only has 1,000 irrigated acres.
No, he would, excuse me.
Sorry, I just, yeah, that's not correct. He does not irrigate 2,000 acres.
No, that wasn't, he was citing several other examples.
Said the lower bridge area.
Yeah.
And please let's not have, let's not have outbursts like that.
Yes. If you want to make a comment later, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Well, anyway, so, you know, 2,000 acres plus in the area and we have an observation well that we've been measuring since the late 90s and it's dropped nine feet in that 20-some plus years. And so you look at that, that magnitude of use, what the water level's doing and, you know, could the aquifer in the area sustain domestic use? Well, yes, it could. It's not, in-home use is a very small use compared to outdoor irrigation agricultural use.
Kyle?
So anyway, it's a.
Could I just get that clarified? You said, because we're always hearing this in, you know, in comments about water, you said it had dropped nine feet and is it in 22 years, is it in 20 years? What is the point of reference for that well that you, you measure with?
Well, one, I tried to find the closest state observation well and it was, it's at the intersection of the Lower Bridge Road and the road that goes to Faith, Hope and Charity Vineyards.
Okay.
It's, that's kind of the location of it. And it, it was either 97 or 98 is when they first started measuring there.
Maybe 25 years.
So 25 years, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
Nine, nine feet of decline in 25 years.
I just think that's really important to get that in the record because, you know, we do hear about what's happening in different areas.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Let's see, I guess I kind of just wanted to paint a picture of water usage in the basin, the laws associated with it, relative magnitudes of use. I don't, I don't really have any more unless you have specific questions.
I, I would love to play out one more scenario with you. So you, you, you helped the applicant kind of come up with some estimates, you know, like if you were to put in three pivots, it would look like this. If you were to put in 71 homes, it would look like this. If this area was to be used for, for seasonal, seasonal grazing to support the livestock industry, you know, I can imagine, well, A, I could imagine them, them thinning out a lot of those junipers and, and really stimulating the bunch grasses. But I could also imagine there needing to be a little bit of water for, for stock watering, you know, maybe a couple of small wells, it may even be like solar powered or something like that, just for a couple of stop, stock watering basins. Do you have a sense of how much water that might be and would an agricultural use of that scale be large enough that I would have to go through a full water rights application, do mitigation, et cetera, et cetera?
No, so one of the exempt uses is stock water from groundwater. This very, we're wrestling with this very question in the Klamath Basin, doing some well, stock water wells funded by Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. So the question came up, how much water should we allocate to a cow? And the NRCS says that a cow, calf pair can use 25 gallons a day. So that's two cows, a calf and a cow, 25 gallons a day. So you just multiply number of cows and it's actually relatively small amount.
Okay. Thank you. That's great. And that would be, that would also be an exempt use?
That's right. Yeah.
Okay. Any other question?
Well, thanks for the big picture. You know, it's really good to understand that the domestic use is just so much less than that, the outdoor agricultural pivot irrigation efforts and that we do live in a mitigation basin, you know, so there is a function of development, there's no authority to create new water rights. So that's, you know, good to understand.
So, and just to repeat, you did say that there are 2,000 acres in the Lower Bridge, Big Fall area that are now currently being irrigated?
It's probably more than that in the area. I just took a, I mean, literally like a minute and a half to draw a circle around all the irrigated ground and then I estimated it was about 2,000 acres. But it, it could be more depending on how big a circle you, you draw in that area. But anyway, that's a, I just wanted to throw out a number that you'd have a reference.
Okay.
And none of that is served by an irrigation district?
Well, some of the land is served by the Three Sisters Irrigation District and they have supplemental wells. I just looked at how many acres were covered with groundwater. Yeah.
Wait, the 2,000 acres was what's covered by groundwater or?
Yeah, yeah, there's 2,000. So don't fixate on the, that exact number. It was, I just did it really quick.
Plus or minus?
Plus or minus 1,000 acres.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Sure.
Is there anyone else I need to recognize at this time or can I call a Megan Martin?
None of those other, none of those other state agencies are joining us online or are, are otherwise available in the room?
You see anyone, Stephanie? Oh, Kyle, if you would please, please fill out a blue form for us. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Megan Martin and my address is 1961 Southwest Knoll Avenue. We have lived in Bend and this area for over 22 years and we're, we're passionate about how it's being developed. And it's my pleasure today to speak on the behalf of the Seven Ten Properties and the project that they're proposing. I've had the opportunity to both see the land in person. I've had the opportunity to both see the land in person and to get to know the Seven Ten Property Partners that are proposing this project. The Seven Ten Property Partners are not professional land developers. Rather, they are visionary individuals that see the potential for creating sustainable rural housing on 10-acre parcels. They have done extensive research and analysis to understand the impact such a project would have on the natural environment, as opposed to using the land for agricultural purposes. Having learned about the results of the soil testing and seen the landscape myself, it is apparent that the land is not suited for agricultural purposes. It has poor soil, dry rocky terrain, covered with scrub juniper trees and desert brush. People would only need to see the land in person to agree that building one home per 10 acres would keep the natural landscape intact, far more than attempting to turn this land into farmable terrain. This project would offer benefits to both the environment and those struggling in our region. Homes built on 10-acre parcels would become the model for solar-powered, self-sustaining, low-density rural housing. Furthermore, the partners of Seven Ten Properties are motivated by their mission to our community. Their goal is to use project...
Megan, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. It's not working, Nick.
I've got it on my...
In case you didn't, I've got my phone going, so you're fine. Go ahead. So sorry to interrupt.
I was saying that the partners are motivated by their mission to our community. Their goal is to use project proceeds to support a wide breadth of nonprofits throughout Central Oregon, creating a huge impact on the countless individuals that are served by such nonprofits. I have had the opportunity to get to know the Seven Ten Property Partners, and I trust their motives. They have been earnest in their research to investigate the environmental outcomes of converting the land from agricultural zoning to rural residential zoning. It has been disappointing to see the images and descriptions that some are using to publicly portray this land. These are misleading and deceptive. All it takes is one visit out to the property to see the discrepancy between what some are claiming and the reality of the land and the terrain. I highly recommend the Deschutes County Commissioners support the proposal for the Seven Ten Properties and approve for rural residential zoning. This would go farther to preserve the natural environment and limit the strain on water resources, rather than see the land use limited to agricultural purposes for which it is not suited. Thank you so much for the time to share my testimony today.
Thank you so much, and sorry for the interruption.
That's okay.
Then maybe it'll work this next, this next person. Okay, Kim Campbell? Thank you for joining us.
My name's Kim Campbell. I live at 9590 Northwest Teeter Avenue, down in the Lower Bridge, off Lower Bridge Road. My concern is water, as, you know, keeps being brought up. My pump is currently one foot off the bottom of my well. That's getting pretty close to none. So I got into the USGS surveys from 95 to 2001, and also 2008, 95 to 2008. And there's a lot of reading, about 50-some pages apiece. But what generally comes out of that, and Mr. Gorman can probably maybe back me up on this or tell me I'm full of it, one or the other, but there appears to be two different levels of aquifers that people are using. The one at Big Falls Ranch and all that irrigated ground down there, from that level is down around 300 feet, and they're into a lot of water. Most of the people that are north of Bend, and especially in the Redmond area, Lower Bridge area, they're down, like, I'm down 165 feet. That's kind of the shallow well aquifer there. And according to the USGS surveys of those times, those aquifers are primarily, primarily fed by the canals, by the percolation of the canals is the major recharge for those aquifers. Okay? So when they end up piping all these well, or all these, all these canals, there's going to be a whole lot less water in these shallow wells. And most people, they go down and drill a well, when they hit sufficient water, they don't go any further. Okay? It's like my well. When I moved there in 98, I mean, I was born in Redmond, I've been here my whole life. I bought that property, I had 20 gallons an hour for an hour with no drawdown. Now I can barely keep things going. So, and of course, all of you have heard all the stories about, you know, Crooked River Ranch, I mean, wells are dropping like flies. So something's going on. Okay? So it's also understood that the aquifers generally flow from south to north. Okay? So if we're going to put a subdivision south of me, it could easily affect my well. And everybody else's wells that are these shallow wells, I'm 165 feet, it's not shallow, but as far as the aquifers in this country, the big water is at 300 feet or greater. For me, it'd probably be about 400 and 450 feet, something like that, for me to get down into that irrigation aquifer, basically, that Big Falls Ranch and all these other places are pulling out of. So I guess, I mean, I'm not opposed to subdivisions going in, but water has to be thought of. We're running out of it at that level. So my suggestion is, okay, if you are going to put this, you know, this many houses in there, you're going to have to go down into that, into that 300-foot range or 450-foot range into the big water aquifer in order to not affect me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campbell. If you want to submit written testimony, you may of course do that. But your, the three minutes did beep a few minutes ago.
Well, I need...
Thank you so, no, thank you for coming today. We appreciate it. Thank you for those, your personal story. It looks like we have Shelley Blaise?
My name is Shelley Blaise. I live at 9590 Northwest Teeter Avenue. I'm Terrabon. I apologize for the interruption, Mr. Gorman, but when I hear something that is infactual, I'm going to correct it. Big Falls Ranch proper irrigates 1,000 irrigated acres, not two. And just speaking with my ex-husband on the phone, all of our wells have dropped nine to 10 feet, not just the one, all of them. And I believe we've got seven ground wells on the farm. He was a former partner, not anymore. So, anyway, my concern obviously is water as well. Again, horror stories at Crooked River Ranch, wells going dry left and right. Ours is on the ground at this point, and we would have to get on speed dial with Abus Drilling. If any of you guys have been to Abus recently, they've had to add counter space for all their work orders. Their counters are full of work orders, the walls and corkboards are full of work orders as far as people's wells running dry and having to be re-drilled and going down further. And sir, can I have your cell number? Because when my well goes dry, I want to call you, because you've told me it's not going to happen. So if you can...
Please, address the board.
Okay, okay. But he said no, nothing's going to happen. So I want a guarantee then, that if we get 71 homes above us and we live north of them, that nothing's going to happen. He told me it wasn't. Besides having Abus well drilling on speed drill, what is my recourse?
So are you domestic or irrigated irrigation?
Domestic. What's my recourse besides spending $25,000 to $30,000 on a new well? So water's an issue. And if it's not a criteria for these subdivisions, it should be, in my opinion.
Shelley, just to clarify, you said all the wells have dropped nine feet. Are you talking about, do you have more than one well on your property?
I'm talking Big Falls Ranch.
You're talking about the ranch?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just got off the phone with my ex-husband. He said most of the static levels on the wells have dropped, not just the one that Mr. Gorman was talking about, because I think REX measures all of them. And I could be infactual on that, I haven't been a partner in the farm now for a couple of years, but all of the well levels are dropping.
Well, and that makes sense. I mean, he was referring to a test well, but the water's dropping in the...
The whole aquifer is dropping, and REX's wells, I think, are at about 300 feet. Anyway, my other concern is Buckhorn Road, and I'm looking at a hearings officer's report from a subdivision that was going to go in north of us, and that would have been north of Lower Bridge Estates. And I think it's all gravel pit down there, and we had a gentleman come in and buy the whole thing, and so the application got yanked, so now it's all just fenced for his property. But here's what the hearings officer mentioned about Lower Bridge Way a couple of years ago, that subdivision, there were 20 lots on 160 acres, okay? And the axis would have been Lower Bridge Way. And it says, "Along the frontage of the subject property, a portion of northwest Lower Bridge Way does not meet the minimum paved width requirement of 28 feet in DCC 1748A." So if Lower Bridge Road does not meet the requirement for a subdivision of 20 homes on 160 acres, how does Buckhorn Road meet any kind of county requirement for a subdivision of 71 homes? And I get that you've applied for a grant for 1.6 miles of it, it's over four. And not everybody going out of that subdivision is going to go south. Some are going to come out and go north. It's a one-lane gravel road. So you've got a hearings officer that didn't think Lower Bridge was appropriate for 20 homes. I don't know what you're going to do with Buckhorn Road. I mean, they're out there grading that thing every other week, and with that much extra traffic, it's going to be a nightmare for the county. So, anyway. I'm not opposed to it. That property can't support a jackrabbit. I'm sorry, it's just horrible ground. I just don't think the timing for the water is right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Please submit written testimony if you care to.
If I could just say one thing, if groundwater is going to be a theme today, there's a very localized story that's happening in the Lower Bridge Valley area. But I would also strongly encourage people to read, there was an Oregon Water Resources Department study that was completed just a few years ago, where they tried to basically break down the reasons for groundwater declines across the Upper Deschutes Basin. The kind of high-level story is that five-eighths of the decline that we've seen, you know, over 50% can be attributed to drought. So we have, we've had, climatically, we've had, you know, a couple very bad years in a row, and then we didn't have great years before that. So that is, that is the major reason why groundwater across the basin is declining. But the other three-eighths did include things like too many straws in the ground, you know, more wells, more residential wells, and the competition for shallow, particularly for shallow groundwater. And also, it did address the impacts that canal piping is having in a very localized way in the areas where those canals run on very, very shallow groundwater. So again, the story in the Lower Bridge Valley is very localized, it's pretty complex, and there's more to it than what that, that high-level report deals with. But just at the, at the high level, people need to understand that a lot of the reason for the groundwater decline is drought.
And not only five years of very dry lack of rainfall, but don't forget, if you look at a picture of Central Oregon 80 years ago, there were hardly any junipers. And I was really glad to hear that you addressed the juniper issue in what we've seen this afternoon, because the junipers are, you know, they use, what, 30 to 50 gallons a day? And if we're really lucky, we get 11 inches of rain a year. So it's, yeah, there's, I think there's a couple of things going on, and I really think junipers could be part of that situation. Could I please call Steve, is it Reif? 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 Okay, thank you so much, Steve.
Yeah, thank you for having me. My name is Steve Reif. My address is 70778 Bitterroot Sisters. As a Deschutes County homeowner since the 1990s, I've seen the explosive population growth in Central Oregon and the need for more housing. The region especially needs housing options that will allow people to pursue a rural, low-density housing lifestyle that does not force them to live in a city or resort setting. From a personal perspective, I have relatives who are considering a relocation to Central Oregon, and they want an option that lets them enjoy the incredible beauty of our area while maintaining a rural character. I also strongly believe that in good stewardship, it is important to accurately classify our Central Oregon lands. If a parcel of land cannot support a viable, profitable farming operation, it should not be designated as such, and I think we've seen enough evidence today to support that conclusion. There are significant societal and long-lasting economic benefits to be gained for the broader Deschutes County community if this land were to be opened up to rural residential housing, and I hope that it will be determined that this is ultimately the best use for this land. Thank you.
Thank you for using your three minutes very wisely. More or less than. Thank you, Steve. I believe, oh, Matt Cyrus?
My name is Matt Cyrus, 16925 Green Drake Court, Sisters. And there's been a lot of discussion about grazing and the possibility that this ground would sustain a grazing operation. My family's been in Deschutes County, well, actually, since before it was Deschutes County, but we've been, I'm a sixth-generation farmer, we've been in Central Oregon since the 1880s. We run, I'm in addition to President of Deschutes County Farm Bureau, which I'm not here representing Farm Bureau, I'm representing myself, but we've raised cattle, we've run cattle on grazing land in eastern Oregon, currently running grazing, or cattle on the Kleinbutte grazing permit. And just for a comparison, I ran some numbers. The Kleinbutte grazing permit is 32,000 acres. The BLM, which they have all their experts decide how many AUMs, which is Animal Use Month, are allowed for that 32,000 acres, is 684 AUMs. You divide that by 12 months, because it's per month, or it's animal use months, gives you 57 cattle that that will sustain on an annualized basis on 32,000 acres. If you take the numbers and translate that 32,000 acres divided by 57 cattle, it's 561 acres per animal, or per pair, actually. So the 710 acres that we're talking about, if you, if you follow the same guidelines that the BLM uses for their grazing, and they handle grazing nationwide, or anywhere there is BLM, that equates to one and a quarter animal that this property would sustain. And granted, you know, certainly it may be great for wildlife habitat, but it's certainly not economical for grazing for livestock. And so, you know, if you got any, I mean, happy to answer any questions.
That sure puts it in perspective. That BLM, is that co-located at all? Is that like south?
That, the BLM allotment is just, just to the south of this property, a couple miles. And in fact, I've been on the subject property, and the BLM property actually has better grazing land than what the subject property is. So, I mean, if you compare that, maybe it's good for one cow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Based on the, based on the applicant's AUM calculations, and then the State Department of Agriculture's analysis, that you could, you could concentrate the grazing on that land over grazing season as opposed to doing it all year, because, you know, many ranchers will bring their cows in for the winter and feed them hay. But they were estimating that this property was capable of supporting 16 to 30 cow-calf pairs for a season.
And I, you know, typically, I mean, like I mentioned, if you've got, if you're doing it on a six-month grazing, then you can double the number of animals that that's, but I think, I think, I wish you, probably those are based on statistical averages and not site-specific.
I mean, it was the applicants, they work off the applicant's own AUM numbers.
Right. And I'm, I would actually quite frankly question that data, because I think it's generous. Based on adjacent property that the BLM manages, I think is a little more site-specific. And I personally, I saw those numbers, and I think they're high.
Okay.
But that's my opinion.
Yeah. And we already heard about how the, much of the productivity of this landscape is being taken up with very recent juniper encroachment.
Right.
Right now as well.
So, any other?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cyrus, for joining us today. Rob Imhoff, do you care to join us?
Which one do I have? Is one better than the other?
Well, it's your choice.
All right. Bear with me one second. Don't start my time.
We'll try not to.
I've been writing and changing notes.
We're really good at.
There you go. All right. So my name is Rob Imhoff. I live at 20183 Fire Rock Road in Bend. I'm going to start by reading a letter that I wrote to you guys prior to the last hearing. Chairman Adair, Commissioner DeBonne, and Commissioner Chang, I'm a proud Oregonian, born and raised here, and now raising my own family in Deschutes County. I am a small business owner and avid outdoorsman. And like most historically native Oregonians, I have a deep love and appreciation for our natural environment and understand the various dangers posed to it by unchecked development. But sustainable rural residential housing on soil not suitable for any other use is hardly unchecked development. I am writing to you today in strong support of 710 Properties' application to rezone roughly 700 acres from EFU to RR10 between Redmond and Sisters. Like thousands before me and thousands to come, I was drawn to the high desert for the easy access to recreational opportunities, central Oregon's strong values of conservation, and our shared connection to the land under our feet. I have known the 710 Properties team for many years, and as native central Oregonians themselves, please know that they share these same beliefs. This application to rezone the property is an important step in accommodating our population growth in a manner that's consistent with these values. Thank you for your careful consideration of the facts in this case, blah, blah, blah. Okay. So, as a summary of my thoughts, I wanted to present a challenge to the board at large and all the citizens of Deschutes County. I think we can all agree that residential growth, which is both reasonable and responsible as stewards of our land, requires finding middle ground specifically regarding where growth can, should, and needs to take place and meet these criteria. As previously stated by the applicants, the property in question has no viable farm use, as evidenced by both the testing and is easily confirmed by a simple visit to the property, which is currently utilizing water disproportionately due to dense juniper population. As an avid outdoorsman and a lifetime resident, my entire life has been comprised of memories and images of land that was once farmed and forested or otherwise undeveloped that has since been developed. I feel like we often get caught up in well-intentioned and misdirected fights for the purpose, for the purposes of preventing future development. The perspective is often deeply entrenched and refuses to budge, demanding total conservation and preservation over the need for people to move to or relocate within our community. In conclusion, I would ask each commission member and citizen to ask themselves a very complicated question, which is, why did I or my family move here in the first place? Once one answers that question, the appropriate follow-up question would be to ask if this type of development deters that reason. If it does, I may suggest that an honest self-reflection could lead to a position of wanting to stop any future development, but not till after you've established your own home and your own slice of heaven. If it doesn't, as in my opinion, then the decision to approve this zone change showing sustainable large acreage residential properties should be approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Brian, is it Reb? Yes. Thank you so much.
My name is Brian Rebby with Valley Science and Engineering, and I'm the person that wrote the soils report. And I did want to take a quick opportunity to clarify a couple of things. As was discussed when Matt Cyrus was testifying, the report does have very generous numbers in there. It's based solely on the NRCS values for statistically those soils across the county. And it's, it's not site-specific, except for the mapping of the soils. And I would agree, those numbers are generous. And a lot of that may be due to the, to the juniper encroachment. So really, the removal of the juniper only gets it back to what it could be as studied by the NRCS. It wouldn't really take it beyond that. The other thing I think it's important to note is that there's a very big difference between domestic water use and irrigation as it pertains to the impact on the aquifer. Because the, in-home domestic use, these will all be served by septic systems, and that water goes back beneath the ground, often near the bottom of or below the root zone. And, and most of that water eventually works its way back to the aquifer after it's been treated through the soil. Irrigation, on the other hand, if it's done properly, is almost 100 percent evapotranspiration and does not return to the aquifer. And so I would contend that domestic use has less potential impact to the aquifer from that perspective as well. And I would be open to addressing any other questions the board has.
So you're talking about irrigation during the day when it's 90 degrees out, and it's a lot of water's going to evaporate?
Even irrigation at night.
Really?
If irrigation is done properly, and we're making, my parent company is an irrigation company, and this is something we focus on a lot, is, is trying to help people use their water more effectively. And, you know, you use it better by doing it in the evenings and such that you don't have as much evaporative loss. But on top of that, our goal with irrigation is to apply water only to replenish the soil. If you think of the soil as a sponge to hold the water for the plant to use, if we apply just enough water to refill the sponge, the plant then can use it. What's happened historically with flood irrigation, and a lot of times, folks that haven't had the tools to irrigate well, they'll say, well, I'm going to set those sprinklers to run for 24 hours. In the first four hours, they fill the soil profile, and the other remaining hours of that set, that water's percolating down through the soil and going right back to the water. So it's a waste of energy. It's washing nutrients out of the profile, all those things that, you know, make it less efficient and more costly ultimately for the farmers. So there's a lot of technology being applied today to help farmers make better use of their water. The, and this is all totally aside, but it would certainly be advantageous if our water laws would encourage that by allowing a farmer that uses less water to irrigate his 120-acre circle to then use the savings, or at least a significant portion of those, to irrigate more acres if he had those available to irrigate. But unfortunately, that incentive's not there. They often get penalized for their efficiency because the water savings either go in-stream or go someplace else. But that's an aside.
So just what, to reconfirm what you said, actually, four hours of irrigation is really adequate, and then after that point in time, you really should turn it off and save?
Very much a hypothetical example. The amount of time depends on the delivery rate and the depth of the soil, particularly the rooting depth of the crop. So you have some crops that are very shallow-rooted. Even if you have deep soils, you don't need to water them as deep. And then there's plenty of places in Deschutes County where people are trying to irrigate ground like this property, and it's running over the rocks and in the small amount of soil between the rocks, and the rest of it is basically wasted because it's percolating down into the bedrock and, and is gone.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next person is Michael Sype.
Look, Miss Nurse.
Good afternoon. Mr. Sype, thank you for joining us.
You bet. My name's Michael Sype. My address is 64708 Alcor Place, Bend, Oregon. I've been here a long time. I'm a farm kid. I love central Oregon. I'm an outdoorsman, as others have talked about. I, I care a great deal about our environment and about the community that we live in, all aspects of it. I, I know the, the owners of this. I know the developers. They're awesome people. They're great people. I've been to the property, walked it twice. Everything that people have talked about, the property, is the case. I've actually seen it with my own eyes. So the thing I'd like to talk to you about today is really a principle of land use. So if you, if you look at optimum land use, or the highest and best use of a property, there's really four categories to this. The first one is, is it physically possible? Well, farm use is, has been pretty well determined now that it's not physically possible. And I've been up there, I'm a farm kid, it's not physically possible up there. So that's not a good use, which is why the land has been vacant for, well, forever. But the development that they're proposing is physically possible. Is it financially feasible? That's the second consideration for highest and best use of land. And the answer is that it's not financially feasible to use this for farming. That's been pretty well established, and as a farm kid, it's, you put a, a feedlot up there, and you drag hay up there, and then you bring water up and all this, it's not going to make sense. So it's not financially feasible. This project that they're talking about is most definitely financially feasible for the developers and also for the county. Third thing is, is it maximally productive? These are the categories for highest and best use of land. Well, first is for the property, and so this is clearly the highest and best use for the property versus lying fallow or trying to farm it. Second thing is, though, the social aspect of this. Is it the highest and best use for the community? And I would argue that it's very high use for the, highest and best use for the community. Number one, in terms of the fact that we need houses. Everyone knows we need houses, and this frees up space. Is it going to solve the whole problem? No, but every bit helps in that regard. The other thing is, for the county, we have a massive increase in property taxes that the county's going to experience as a consequence of this. Then the third thing is the social benefits from the developers and their plan to support local nonprofits. This is a really high-quality social project as well as a residential project. That leads us to the fourth characteristic of highest and best use, and that's, is it legally permissible? And that's where you come into play. So the, the criteria here for highest and best use is all satisfied, except for, is it legally permissible? And that's why I'm here to request that you make it legally permissible by approving the zoning change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sype.
Oh, look at that, yeah.
Three minutes.
Drops the mic. Drops the mic on the way out.
Is that Janine Beck?
She left.
Oh, she left? Perhaps she'll do a written testimony, or she'll come back for, when we reconvene at 5:30. It looks like Billy Bucknam? Bucknam?
Thank you, Patty. You were close.
I tried. It's almost a relative's name.
There you go.
Thanks for having me. Billy Buchanan, 10142 Northwest Coiner. So I live on kind of the neighboring property of, of 710's property, just to the southeast of it. So on the subject of whether or not this would be viable for agricultural use, you know, there's a lot of things that are mentioned as far as if it's too steep, too rocky, or in order to drill more dryland forages into this property, it's not, it's not necessary to use a drill for a lot of these different species of grass. It's actually been used since the 1950s to broadcast with a small-engine plane for crested wheatgrass species that grow surrounding the property. I looked at the property today, at least from the fence line. I wasn't going to go on it. But surrounding the property, there's quite a bit of crested wheatgrass over there that's, grows up to three feet tall, deep-rooted system. Most of those grasses absorb a lot of nutrients and absorb a lot of water because of that root system. I think it would be viable to broadcast some more seed out there. You'd have to do it pretty heavy because there's a lot of depredation from your birds and rodents, things like that. I guess the other topic of that would be the, the infrastructure. A lot of agriculture requires infrastructure, whether it's for your hay storage, hay sheds, feeding ground, things like that. You don't want to take your irrigated ground and do that. We talked about well water for stock water. We live adjacent to that property. It would be, it would be more economically viable for us to haul water onto that piece of property. I feel like you could use that piece of property and stock, you know, on an average year, somewhere around 60 or 70 head on that for three months. Just based on my experience, I'd consider it average-range ground. I mean, it doesn't look like farmable ground, but I've seen worse ground in central Oregon that, that cows will be on. And you could make improvements with it by clearing out some juniper, planting more of those grasses. You know, I can understand with people wanting to move into rural areas and enjoy privacy in the, the landscape and things like that. I don't understand the argument that using it for agricultural use has a greater impact on that than building 70 new homes. You know, I mean, that's, that's my thought on it. I wouldn't be able to understand that thought process. The subject of water, that's already been covered. I mean, that's very concerning to us is the, the use of those aquifers. If this is used for dryland forage and it's grazed, and if it's improved upon with dryland feed, I think it could be, could be utilized. Talking about agriculture being economically viable, find me any piece of property right now that's economically viable for agriculture. I think I'm out of time.
Could I ask you a question, Mr.? Currently, like, I'm, I'm not familiar with your, your livestock operation. Do you lease any land beyond what you, you currently, or?
We do.
Or have, have allotments or things like that?
Correct. And that's a challenge right now with, with district water. We've been cut back 60% in some places. And most of it, I'm spending $6 a gallon in diesel to go travel there.
Right. Right. But I, could you give me a sense of proportions? Like, how many acres are you, do you, do you need to lease to make your operation viable?
You know, it's somewhere around 100 irrigated acres.
Okay.
So in order to do that, you have to be spread pretty thin.
Right. Right. Are, so you don't have a need for more dryland acres? You, you need, you need irrigated acres to, to round out your?
For us, there would be advantages for the dryland acreage, especially with fall-cabbing cows. Right now, the fall-cabbing cows are getting too fat when they're not raising a calf.
Okay.
So we would have an advantage with dryland property.
Uh-huh. Helpful to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy, for joining us today. All right. I believe we have some more? Thank you. Elizabeth? Buchanan?
So I, we submitted last night, I hope you guys got it, a business plan for our ranch, Keystone Natural Beef. My husband's Billy Buchanan. I don't know if he mentioned that. Did you guys receive that? I have a copy here today if you would like that.
Sorry, I haven't seen it yet.
So a first email to us, we got it, but yeah, I wouldn't have taken.
Okay. It was submitted, it was submitted yesterday. So we own Keystone Natural Beef. We border the subject property. I mean, there's a road in between, but we're, we're looking to expand our ranch. We would love to ranch that property. I'm kind of the entrepreneur of our relationship, and so for me, I, I see, I have, I'm the visionary. We would, we really need more land, specifically dryland. We have enough irrigated land. We've been purchasing, we've got some places out in Palbutte. What we do is we, we buy the irrigated land. We turn the places into Airbnbs or rentals, so that pays for our irrigated ground. However, we don't really have a place to expand, you know, winter ground. We need more space. So when people are up here talking about, oh, well, you can only get this many cows on the grass, it's not about just the grass. We're talking about this, you need space. I mean, it's, so we, we really need the extra space, and this would just be, we could move our cows, I mean, it would take us 10 minutes to move our cows instead of having to put them in a trailer and haul them somewhere. You know, we lose cattle when we don't have eyes on them. We have to check them regularly, and that's, we've already lost five cows this year. For, one got stuck in a fence on a leased ground that we had to go lease because we couldn't expand our operation. We've lost thousands of dollars in cattle just this past two months because of freak accidents, because we didn't have our eyes on them. Like, when you're ranching and you're calving, you have to be, you have to be close. So for us, we don't, we have hay ground. We don't need all this grass. We need the space. We would have loved to lease this property. We have a business plan. We've submitted it. We need this ground. Like, we'll take it. We'll buy it. We'll lease it. it. We need this ground. Like we'll take it. We'll buy it. We'll lease it. We're obviously not going to buy it at development pricing, but that is the reason for the Oregon zoning laws. The reasons for these laws are to protect ranchers. We're young. We're visionaries. Like this could make or break our, our ranching career. You know, my husband's a fourth generation rancher. We're trying to expand here. We serve all natural grass-fed beef to the community here in central Oregon. We do free deliveries. People love it. You know, we go to the local events, talk about charitable. That's what we do. We, we go out into our community. We're feeding our community. And if you guys vote to allow a bunch of housing next to our property, it's going to be hugely detrimental. And like I said, we, we submitted our whole plan. We have a vision. We need this land. We need, we need more land. We need to stop rezoning this stuff into developments. There's plenty of Hayden Homes and all these other developments that people can live their rural lifestyle, but not, not here. Like this is EFU for a reason and we're perfectly capable of ranching it. And if you have questions, please let me know and I'm happy to give you a copy for you guys to have of our.
Okay, you might want to submit that. That would be fine. If you want to give that to Nick, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
One question I have is, you know, kind of with offers for purchase that you've made, have you, are those, have you done appraisals? You know, do you have, do you have valuations that, you know, not as, not with the development rights that would be created with this rezoning, but you know, as, you know, for current, you know, with, with current zoning and current classification, like do you have valuations and, and are the offers that you're making kind of in line with, with those values?
Yes. Well, not in the, that's the problem. When, when someone has an option to sell a piece of land to someone who's doing what they're doing and making it a residential neighborhood, of course, it's not in our price range. That was the point of EFU zoning is to keep stuff affordable so people can ranch. Nobody can afford a ranch here anymore. We're one of the very few families that are making it work because we turn things into, you know, we'll turn it into a farm stay or, you know, and the people just come with their families and it's incredible. They've never seen a horse or a cow before. And so we, we do try to fill that gap of people from the cities being able to still enjoy central Oregon. It's not just all ours for our cow, you know, we really, and absolutely the valuation, if that was valued at non-buildable land, of course, it's in our price range. Like we own already eight properties in central Oregon. And so I know the numbers. We own many.
From all those prior purchases, you have some sense of?
Oh, yeah. We, yeah, we, I mean, we're very much into real estate and specifically ranching, ranches is what we buy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Carol Macbeth?
Good luck.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Central Oregon Lamb Watch. My name is Carol Macbeth. I'm a staff attorney with Central Oregon Lamb Watch here in Bend, 2843 Northwest Lolo Drive in Bend. The developer's attorney sort of mixed up a couple of points that I wanted to straighten out for you. He had mentioned that water rights are very expensive and that certainly could be true, but the question here is whether water is available. In their application and in their, their subsequent testimony to the hearings officer, the developers kept saying that they couldn't have, their water was not available. That isn't true because they submitted a letter or an email from John Short, who's a water broker in the area, and he trades in water rights. And he wrote to them and said that water rights are available in Lower Bridge. So they're available and that's the question for whether there's water available to grow lavender or greenhouse crops or any of these other things that they said they can't do because there's no water available. That is not the case. Water is available. And if it's very expensive, that would be a reason not to buy the land. It's not a reason that they can't use the land for farming. The question is whether the land can be used, not whether it's affordable for them to buy the water rights and the land. When they're talking about making a profit in money, he also mixed up two things because water rights and land are capital assets. And so when you're looking at an income profit and loss statement, you're saying, this is how much it costs me to buy the ducks and this is how much I sold them for. You don't also account for water rights within that. So it's not an accurate comparison for him to say, oh, the water rights are too expensive. I can't make a profit farming. Does that make sense? That's, that's not, the profit and loss in, that is being spoken of here is about pursuing these agricultural activities after you've already made your capital expenditures in water and land. I mean, that you can't, when you're doing, any farm doing its income statement would not be talking about its land costs and water rights are lumped into land costs when they're trying to decide how much they made for the year. And the USDA came out with a study about two years ago that said that over one-half of US farms every year are not profitable. So the developer's interpretation of the standard is inaccurate. It's not about whether someone is making a profit or can make a profit. Farms may lose money one year and then the next year they make it, but in any one year, more than half of the farms in the United States, 2 million farms are not profitable. What a primary purpose of making a profit in money means is that someone must go into farming with the intent of exchanging farm products for money. So it's really a measure of what they intend to do. They don't intend to grow rabbits and give gifts to their relatives. They intend to sell them in market. Does that make sense? That's what that standard means. And the developer significantly misinterpreted it and that leads to his interpretation of whether farm use is possible. Farm uses are possible. A greenhouse is possible without any use of the soil. Poultry would be possible. There's all these things that one could do that don't require good soils. They require water, but water again is available to the property. I'd also like to say that I was very chagr-- I'm sorry to hear about the concept of zoning and wildlife minimum lot sizes. That is, that seems to be possibly an important reason why the developers are moving ahead right now. Because scientifically, ODFW testified as part of a three-agency letter, all in opposition, the Oregon Department of Agriculture, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and the ODFW all came together very unusually and wrote a letter saying they thought this was a bad idea. ODFW said that this is biologically elk habitat, biologically mule deer habitat. They've been out there. They've been doing the surveys, the radio collar surveys. They've been doing flyovers. This is where they're going to be. This is essential habitat for both species. That's what ODFW testified below. And so the county, as you know, because you've been talking about it, but the wildlife inventory hasn't been updated yet. But when it is, if the same minima are applied, there'll be 160 acre minimum for elk here. There'll be a 40 acre minimum for deer here. And so out of 710 acres, you could have four houses here and preserve elk, or you can have 71 houses right in the middle of what ODFW has already said is essential elk habitat. I don't know if you caught the Bend Bulletin yesterday, but there was an article saying that mule deer populations have dropped 50% since 2002. They're 50% down and they were already in trouble before that. So the mule deer populations are going off a cliff. Here's something that ODFW is giving us, the latest scientific data has made it available, and, and we're thinking about developing right in the middle of their essential habitat, which won't do them any good. Am I done?
Yep.
Oh, I'd just like to finish that thought by saying that, again, if the county would put this on, tell them to come back later or something until the wildlife minimum lot sizes are put in, that would be great. And I just want to conclude by saying that this is all the wildlife and the water are all interesting. But this, this proposal is legally impossible. As we put in our, our written comments, it requires an exception to goal three, but no goal three exception has been sought. And if one is sought, it won't be approved. This land is agricultural land as a matter of law and we explain that in our written comments. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other, another one? Thank you. Okay. Okay. Nancy Gold? Okay, so I take it we're going to be timing this because the clock is defective today?
Yeah, so hopefully everybody can hear the little.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. This hearing room needs technology upgrades. It has needed it since 2008. It'd be great to get a timer clock in your budget this year. I'm coming with a map, Deschutes' Paddle Trail River Guide. What's important is that we have water in our rivers for wildlife and for fish. And under the proposal of 71 new exempt wells, that does not play into the Deschutes groundwater mitigation rules. If you look at what this property owner has done with their property, you will see that they're using not just what was perceived to be talked about in-house domestic use, but they're using the full half-acre groundwater extraction from their wells. So look carefully at the aerial images of what happens around the house owned by these property owners. A recent submittal by Liz Fancher includes documentation that is not related to Deschutes County's aquifer, but relates to the Crooked County that discussed water recharge when you cut trees. I'd like to just state that in 1910, old growth junipers existed here that were wider than a man, a full-grown man's outstretched hands. Junipers are adapted to our client, our climate, and they are the indigenous species here. So the proposal, as you heard from Mr. Katsurov, is not agreeing to being a cluster development. That would be a lot more sustainable than fragmenting all of this wildlife habitat. And what was not disclosed to you is their wildlife consultant, was your wildlife consultant when you did your wildlife habitat update. That process began in July of 2021. So in addition to the mule deer overlay and the mule deer wildlife and elk habitat on this property, this property also acts within the Eagle Territory that is to the east of this property and also to the north of this property. And if you look at your wildlife habitat updates, you will see the territories that have been identified in the wildlife habitat update process. So I will be submitting some additional information in reference to the prior documentation that they submitted a couple of days ago. It's really interesting. Their documentation stops in the year 2007, when it was clear that climate change was beginning here. We're now 2022 and the climate change scenario has drastically increased. Our aquifers, multiple of them are dropping. And what's significant is that 71 wells near springs that are supposed to be used to recharge to benefit for wild fisheries such as steelhead is not a good environmental basis here. And I'd like to close with one thing. You have not notified an agency that you should be notifying, and that's NOAA Fisheries. In none of your land use notifications has NOAA Fisheries been notified of this land use application. And NOAA Fisheries is the federal agency that has oversight to steelhead, which is an endangered species and which you are trying very hard to reintroduce to the Weiches Creek Basin. Please add them to this land use application and request their comments specifically regarding exempt wells. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Hi. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. I'll be brief because there's not much time left, but basically I'm a realtor that once represented this property, so I know it well. I feel for the farmers around it. I think to have residential use, which is completely surrounded for miles by EFU, is ridiculous. It's, goes against a lot of your comprehensive planning, your own plans. One is no apparent need. It's outside the urban growth boundaries. It's far from services and it's not a practical use. But my bigger concern is water. I've lived here for 30 years. I live on farm property. So I'm on EFU land. That's a dry lot that was once a 250-acre cattle ranch. They've never had water on it. Just like the gentleman spoke before, you really don't need it. It was dry grazing. The farmers across the way used it and they did have irrigation. So it's great for additional use to farmers in the area. It's one beneficial use that it should stay at. That property I'm on, again, it has no water rights, so we have horses, so it's a horse property. And that property can serve well as that. But the biggest concern is water. As a farm ranch realtor, I've had not one, but 12 clients call me in the past two months over the summer to tell me their wells have gone dry. Yesterday, unsolicited, I get this email from a client a half a block, a stone's throw away from this development, and sorry for you, coiner people, but his well just went dry. So as of yesterday, his 370-foot well is completely dry. So Abbas' well drilling is going to have a very wealthy year because he's going to be on their list of well deepening. So the fact that you have to deepen a well next door that can't even produce water from one house on their acreage to then a half a block away add 70 new wells into the same aquifer is very irresponsible. And I have attached a few things for you. One is a six-page information sheets on groundwater and well interference and when you, and how things will affect the aquifer. And then on a real estate perspective, I show the properties. Those lots were on the market for five years. Nobody wanted them. Then one finally sold and they weren't even priced high. So they've tried to sell lots there before and they didn't sell because most of the lots are downhill with no view and so far from services, it's of no interest to people. So then I got the listing up the hill. The only good lot they have is visually at the top of the cliff, more on the lower bridge side, and it overlooks Buckhorn and a beautiful view of the Cascade Mountains. So that house is, just like the entire property is off-grid. So besides, so that took four years to sell. So you'll see the land prices are quite low and still didn't sell. And then the whole entire 700-plus acres finally sold after four years for, let me see, one second, for a pretty good price for that kind of acreage. So it finally sold in 2020 for 2.8 million for 710 acres. So I think it's a ridiculous application and I'm in opposition of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for joining us. All right.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the room at this time that wants to give us testimony? Okay. Stephanie, is there anyone on Zoom with a raised hand that we can recognize? And to remind you, if you are on Zoom, you do need to give us your name and your address, please. Abby, do you, do you care to provide testimony?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Abby Kelner Road. I live at 25360 Walker Road and I'm the owner of Boundless Farmstead. I am very opposed to the removal of agricultural land with 710 acres near Terrebonne. Please do not rezone this property for development. Please reverse the hearings officer's decision and deny the proposal. This property is agricultural land as a matter of law. This property is agricultural land as a matter of law. We must protect it and keep it for farm use only. Not only is Oregon's agricultural economy a sector that yields $5 billion annually, but it is important that open land be preserved because it is a physical, social, and aesthetic asset to all Oregonians. The Oregon Department of Agriculture, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development were united in opposition to this. I stand alongside neighboring farmers and ranchers to protect this area for farm and ranch use and to defend the area's agricultural legacy. Speculation in farm and ranch land has artificially increased the price of farmland so much that farmers and ranchers are getting price out of the ability to buy land. The average age of farmers is around 60-plus years old. How are our young farmers ever going to be able to purchase and continue growing food for central Oregon if it continues to be developed for housing? We continue to lose farmlands at an alarming rate. 71 or more residential dwellings are constructed here. What about the increased needs for infrastructure to serve them? What about the stress and expense on the roads, schools, public safety, medical services, wildlife risk, sewer systems, loss of mule deer habitat, and our huge problem mentioned many times with groundwater usage and the drying wells that have been occurring? This development will not aid in our need for low- to middle-cost housing. It will only be available to the wealthy to build more McMansions. Say no to urban sprawl and development. On the local level, we need to stand firm and think about what our values are and look way into the future. According to the 2014-2015 Oregon Farm and Forest Report, central Oregon is losing agricultural land faster than anywhere else in the state. Oregon Governor Tom McCall said, and I quote, "The interests of Oregon for today and in the future must be protected from the grasping wastrels of the land." We must respect another truism, that unlimited and unregulated growth leads inexorably to a lowered quality of life. Governor McCall signed Oregon's land use planning system into law in 1973. Please honor his legacy and preserve our farmlands. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much, Abby. Thank you. And I do believe we received a letter from you also.
Yes.
So thank you very much.
Also, right on the three-minute mark.
Yes, very, very timely. So is there any other raised hands, Stephanie?
Darren Ash.
Okay. Darren, remember to give us your name and your address, please. Thank you.
All right. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Darren Ash, and my address is 52765 Howard Lane in Lapine. And thanks for the chance to be here over Zoom. I'm here to speak against the change to the comprehensive plan, the rezoning. So I'm not a farmer or soil scientist, so I mostly wanted to speak about my own experiences and own observations with sprawl. First, I do want to mention that all the talk about the soil and rocks allows it to be rezoned, but it doesn't require it to be rezoned, much less rezoned to development. You know, a lot of talk about why it's not farmable, other than the testifier who actually wants to ranch it. But I don't see a proposal to have it be rezoned to park or to open space and conservation. You're asking for residential, and that obviously means development. And that's why I think what this is really about is population sprawl. And so what I'm asking is to put a stop to the sprawl before it gets too bad. So I moved here to Lapine from Maui four years ago, and there's a lot to love about Maui, but the sprawl and the type of crowding that it causes isn't one of them. Maybe 15 or so years ago, it wasn't so bad. You could get around easy. It didn't feel too crowded. By the time I left four years ago, it was getting crowded. You had to pick and choose where you could go, when you could go, without having to sit in traffic. And now residents can't go anywhere or do anything without sitting in traffic. And that's Maui. That's not Oahu. So I think that's a really good preview of the effects of sprawl that we'll see here if it's allowed. Hawaii doesn't have urban growth boundaries. We have them here. They're great. Let's use them. They exist so that we don't have sprawl and we don't have the transportation nightmares that sprawl causes. And we also know that, you know, that that's on the north part of the county. It's going to trickle down to the whole county. And so I'm asking you to please don't let Dushut's County turn into Southern California-style sprawl. Please keep central Oregon, central Oregon, and don't approve the rezoning and plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for your very timely message. Okay, Stephanie, do we have another one? Okay. Thank you, Ryder, for joining us.
Hey, good afternoon. Thanks for having me. I admire everybody's ability to sit still. I am just going to-
Ryder, could you please give us your address for the record?
Redfield 8801 Northwest 93rd Lane, Terribon, 97760. I'm going to read so I stay on time. So thank you, and I'll try to cruise through my points. I speak today to share a myriad of reasons why this land certainly should not be rezoned. I understand the need to make a living, but when that profit-driven, short-term developmental thinking comes at the expense of others, both two- and four-legged, perhaps the strategy should be reevaluated. I'm a proud sixth-generation Oregonian. I grew up in Sisters and for the past seven years have lived and worked on the Lower Bridge Way. My entire childhood was spent roaming this area and fishing Lower Bridge with my grandpa, father, and cousin. I manage over 1,200 acres along Lower Bridge Way, all of which is currently and always will be used for farming, restoration, and conservation purposes. So when it comes to direct observation about the area, I can speak with authority. My testimony today is definitely personal, but the true reason is to state that Lower Bridge is not suited for more people. It is designated as EFU land for a reason, and allowing any change of zoning is detrimental to the immediate area. Subject property provides valuable wildlife and aesthetic benefits to the area. In my seven years living on the Lower Bridge Way, I've seen more deer killed than I can count. I've encountered injured deer from poachers on the property. I've had three different people drive through our fences. I've had numerous sketchy encounters with tweakers and other trespassers on the land. I deal with vandalism and litter constantly. Ambulances and police cars are not uncommon, especially during the winter. My sister-in-law has been hit by a car with my young niece in the backseat, just on the intersection of Buckhorn and Lower Bridge. Luckily, they are fine. But my chocolate lab body has been hit by a car on Lower Bridge. Just two Sundays ago, on the 7th of August, I assisted search and rescue, and we had to pull a drowned body out of the river on our land below Lower Bridge. All this has occurred with the current zoning regulations, so just imagine what will occur with that many additional occupants. The applicant takes the altruistic approach of creating much-needed, responsible, sustainable housing. I don't see how expensive, large lots that cut up wildland can fill that niche. In addition to limited capacity of existing roads, there are not adequate services to serve residential development of the subject property, including sewer and good services. If housing concerns and water issues for an overcrowded area are really of importance, then build some low-income housing closer to town. If responsibility truly is your goal, then please leave this land in its current state rather than chop it up, displace wildlife, and bring an unnecessary amount of humans to a place that can't accommodate them. I wish one category of land use, best use practices, could simply be do nothing. Humans are divided into two categories, takers and caretakers. I encourage everyone here to always be on the side of the latter. Thank you, and let's please keep Oregon true to its character.
Oh, thank you, Ryder. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you for having me. Good day.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, Eugene, I believe we're going to be able to hear you in a minute, and please give us your address. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, Eugene Trahern. My mailing address is PO Box 2242 in Sisters, but I actually reside in Northwest 83rd Street in Redmond.
Thank you. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you for having me. I am voicing my opposition to the proposed 710 housing development, currently named the Peaks 360 Housing Development. For background, I'm a civil and structural engineer. I love the outdoors, spend a lot of time adventure hiking and ultra-running. I was born and raised in southern Oregon, and I feel kind of like a newbie because I'm only a fourth-generation Oregonian. But I've lived in Sisters-Bredmond area for the last 20 years. In reviewing the proposed development, it's clear to me that this development does not provide any meaningful benefits to the local neighborhood or to Dushut's County in general. Yes, there'll be a few people who make money on construction on the roads and houses, not to mention the developers, but to the detriment of the rest of us. But money is only a temporary thing. However, the damage that this development will do will be permanent. There's a couple of key items that have not really been adequately addressed. We all know that the developer can hire their experts to provide studies on traffic, groundwater, agricultural land use, and other items. And those experts can and will present the data in a way so their findings will best suit their clients. There's no way to adequately portray all the issues associated with the proposed development in three minutes, so here's a brief summary. Number one, traffic. I think we talked about that, or everybody's talked about that. But the proposed development will add upwards of 1,000 vehicles per day, or four to five times the current use on 91st Street and Cointer. That's not insignificant, so don't just brush that aside and say that we'll address it later. Water, there is no way that any study can reasonably justify the 70-plus homes will not have a measurable effect on the current groundwater levels. Any groundwater study that indicates differently should be considered erroneous. It's just common sense. One thing that hasn't been discussed is light pollution. Adding upwards of 100 new homes, and that's considering the 71 plus all the ADU units, is like adding a small town to the top of the plateau. The light pollution from this development will forever ruin the evening views of everyone from Redmond to Terribon. Daytime light pollution. Developers' website indicates that the project will strive to be off-grid with solar energy. Has anybody actually studied the effects of a solar farm required to run all those houses? Has the FAA approved solar in the massive amounts that they would need to do that? I don't think so. And general environment, the project claims to be environmentally friendly. Seriously, how can you take 700 acres, put 70 to 100 homes on it, and not affect the native ecosystem? Common sense. In summary, all the applicant's studies and testimonies focus on how there will be minimal impact to the groundwater, traffic, or environment, or about how the project will provide additional housing and a few jobs. The larger question remains, how will the existing neighborhood, the Redmond community, and Dushut's County in general, benefit from this development? The answer is, they won't. And finally, the late, great Governor Tom McCall, who by the way was a graduate of Redmond High School, established the LCDC and set statewide planning guidelines for the purpose of preventing, and I quote, "sagebrush subdivisions, coastal condominiumia, and the ravenous rampages of suburbia." This proposed development definitely qualifies for two out of those three. So to the county commissioners, I appreciate your thoughtful questions and inquiries, but in the end, please do the right thing. Keep urban growth where it belongs in the urban growth boundaries. We do not need the urban sprawl of another Thornburg, Crooked River Ranch, or any other large sagebrush development. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Eugene. Thank you for joining us. Okay, Stephanie, I see you're nodding. We must have someone else. Reema, please give us your address when you are brought up as a panelist.
Can you hear me?
We can now. Thank you so much for joining us. If you'd give us your address.
Great, thank you. Sorry about that. My name is Reema Givitt. I live at 18557 McSwain Drive. That's in the Sisters area, off Holmes Road. And I am testifying because I am concerned about a number of different things, but a couple come to the top and have been already talked about, but I think are worth reiterating. The first is the water use. Currently, as it's been said, over half of the reduction in our local aquifers has been climate-driven drought. So because of that, we're on a trajectory of continued drought, and so that needs to be considered as we continue to pull water from aquifer. Increased lowering of the water table must be assumed. That will, it will occur, since based on current trajectories of the last 25 years, water has continued to decrease. And nine feet in those wells in Lower Bridge is no small number. Above that area, up on the Holmes area, many, many wells have either dried up or had to be lowered. And those, that comes with thousands and thousands of dollars of costs to the people that have lived here for multi-generations. And so my question is, if a development like this is considered and put in, who's going to pay for the neighbors to be able to deepen their wells? Is that something that the county would consider? And I would argue that currently there is no process to reimburse the other neighbors for having to lower or redrill wells, and so new wells should not be drilled. Currently, in that 710 acres, there are no wells. And so adding 71 wells of unmitigated water will have an impact on the aquifer. Also, the size of the homes. It was stated that these would provide needed housing in the area. However, the picture that was shown was of a very large home. And my curiosity is, how many of those homes would just be vacation homes? How would you make sure that those homes are actually for filling the housing void? And as has been stated, such housing really should be within the urban growth boundary. Finally, it has been stated that that land is adequate as dry grazing land, both for cattle and for wildlife. And so because it is adequate, there is no reason to rezone it from EFU. That area is utilized currently by both mule deer and elk in the winter, and with increased development, their wintering grounds has been shrunk and shrunk, and currently they're being pressured into a smaller and smaller area. And so if it remains as EFU, it both fills the need for grazing of cattle, which is important for food, for people, and also for the native animals. Thank you so much for the work you're doing on this. I urge you to keep the area zoned EFU. Thank you.
Thank you, Reema, for joining us.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
No.
Are there any phone calls?
I don't see any.
No numbers?
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, Keenan, if you would give us your address, please.
Commissioner Chang, for the record. My name is Keenan Ordin Bacallion. My address is 360 Southwest Bond Street, Suite 510, Bend, 97702. An attorney on behalf of Redside Restoration Project 1 LLC. Redside opposes this application, respectfully urges the board to deny the proposed plan amendment, reads up. Redside has a vested interest in the outcome of this application, as Redside's holdings include property located near the northern border of the subject property, mainly north of Northwest Lower Bridge Way. Written testimony that we've submitted into the record explains the issues with this application in detail, so today I'm going to focus on a brief overview of Redside's concerns. First, the subject property qualifies as agricultural land as the term is defined by state law. There are already a myriad of ways to put the property for farm use, and many members of the public have already spoken to this. Not only will the options involve irrigated farming. Definition of farm use in RS 215203-2A is incredibly broad, and we do not believe the applicant has met its burden of proof to demonstrate that the subject property is not agricultural land. Is there work to be done to put the property to farm use? Yes, absolutely. But that's the challenge that all farmers farming in a high-desert region face. Second, the applicant has argued that many of the relevant policies and goals that Dushut's County Conference of Plan are not applicable because the applicant is not proposing a specific development application at this time. However, the designation and rezonance of subject property represents significant land use. Its impacts- Its impacts must be analyzed at this time. Regardless of whether the application is a non-project action, there are real consequences that can occur from the result of this application being approved, because it dramatically alters the development potential of the subject property. To this point, I'd also like to note, Commissioner Chang, you are correct regarding the vested mechanics of approving this Conferencing Plan Amendment and rezone, which would allow the possibility for the applicant to submit for a site-specific development application prior to the completion of the county's WA zone update. In the applicant's presentation, they've discussed the studies and reports that they have already completed in regard to site-specific impacts on the property resulting from residential development. The hearings officer's decision not to analyze these impacts, including water resources, view sheds, wildlife, and habitat fragmentation, and traffic, was an error. We submit that the time to analyze these impacts is now. On the critical issue of water, the redesignation of the subject property will allow up to 71 homes to drill exempt wells that can pump up to 15,000 gallons per day, as well as irrigate up to half an acre. Mr. Gorman noted outdoor watering has a significant impact on groundwater. And to take a page out of the applicant's book, the prospect of CCNRs limiting water consumption is entirely hypothetical at this time. Finally, the application is incompatible with surrounding land use patterns. The property is located in an area characterized by farming and ranching activities and is lacking adequate infrastructure to support far-scale rural development. Intensive residential development of the property, which will be viable if the application is approved, will adversely impact the surrounding area, which is predominantly in agricultural production. There's already available residential land in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. The Teeter Acres subdivision is located just the north of the subject property, and many of the RR10 lots within the Teeter Acres subdivision remain undeveloped. Notably, the county owns several of these undeveloped lots within the development. For this application to be compatible with the surrounding area, there first needs to be a need for residential development. There is not. In closing, we respectfully request that the board keep the record open and provide for additional commentary, which the board's already intimated will occur. Thank you very much for your time today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Keenan, for joining us today. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Dave, this, no, there's no other? Okay, and no one else in the room then wants to testify at this moment? We will be available again at 5:30. Will he have his 10 minutes now for his rebuttal?
No, that will be...
After the 5:30. Okay, all right. So...
Before we pause, I'm guessing a number of people might depart before and not come back for our, the continuation of the hearing. I mean, I would love to share a couple thoughts, but is that all right right now?
If you would like.
Yeah. So I, just based on what I've heard today, I wanted to share some thoughts about the agricultural use question. I agree with the applicant that the soil conditions and the water, the current water rights for this property make it not suitable for irrigated crops. For, you know, this is not a place to grow hay or potatoes. I just don't, I don't see that. But lands like this, you know, I can think of hundreds of thousands of acres across eastern Oregon of lands a lot like this that are used, that they form the basis for viable ranches all over eastern Oregon. And those ranchers in eastern Oregon are perfectly comfortable to have their lands identified as EFU and to accept that designation. So I do not agree with the hearings officer's analysis that the potential for this land to be seasonally grazed profitably is not available. I do, you know, I can't show you proformas or business plans or anything like that that, you know, to say that these lands could be profitably branched. I mean, perhaps the folks from the Keystone Ranch could make those, you know, make those kinds of arguments or show you those kinds of business analysis. But there, again, there are hundreds of thousands of acres just, you know, very similar to this all over eastern Oregon that form the basis of viable ranches. And our comprehensive plan lays out a goal of preserving and maintaining agricultural lands and the agriculture industry. And I, we actually, it was very helpful to hear that testimony from an adjacent rancher today to make this point, that the livestock industry needs enough acres and enough AUMs in a given area to be viable. We've here up on the dais, we've talked a number of times over the last year about how the livestock industry needs a sufficient amount of meat processing, USDA-certified meat processing capacity to be viable. And similarly, and that's a real priority for us, similarly, the livestock industry needs a critical mass of AUMs and land base to be viable. And 710 acres is a significant chunk when you think about that need for a critical mass of viable land base. So, you know, the, much of the analysis in the, in the application, in the hearings officer's analysis, really tried to kind of look at this property as an island. And I get, I get why you might want to look at it as an island legally, you know, like, okay, if you were to do a ranch on the 710 acres, 15 to 30 cows for, you know, six months of the year, it's not a lot. But typically, ranches in eastern Oregon are made up of the owner's holdings, leased lands, BLM or Forest Service grazing allotments. It is, it is a kind of agglomeration of land base that makes these operations viable. And so to try to look at a piece of land like this and to say that it couldn't be a viable livestock operation in isolation is not, it's just ignoring the way that the industry works. Okay, so that was the, that's one of the big things that has been weighing on my mind and kind of will shape the way that I look at this application for a comp plan amendment and rezoning. And I just wanted to share that before people, anyone departed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, then.
Will you be in recess now until...
I think we should recess now until 5:30.
Here we go.
And thank you, everyone. If you don't come back, thank you for joining us today.
It's 5:30 somewhere.
There you go.
It must be here.
I forgot to bring the margaritas.
Okay, definitely we forgot to bring the margaritas. Okay, I want to reconvene our meeting. We're here for more testimony, three minutes. If you have joined us just now, please get a blue sheet out, fill it out, and we have an opportunity to hear more testimony for the 710 project.
Commissioner Dare, I could just quickly ask a quick question. I'm happy to go over the Zoom procedures again.
Okay.
Or run through the staff.
Are they like four pages or is that like four pages of procedures? Okay, sure enough, do that.
People might have joined us.
Yes.
Can we check with Stephanie whether we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, do we have anyone on Zoom Stephanie that's new?
I think there's a couple names that are new.
Yeah, why don't you check with them and see?
It'll be good to go through the procedures so they understand what's going on.
Want me to go ahead? Okay, I'll go ahead and do that.
Go ahead, thank you Holly.
Yeah, no problem, all right. So again, everyone, we're here this evening for a public hearing. In this case, the Board of County Commissioners is taking testimony and receiving written evidence pertaining to an application for a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment for approximately 710 acres. 710 Properties LLC is the applicant this evening, and again, they're requesting to re-designate the properties from agriculture to rural residential exception area and exclusive farm use to rural residential 10. Quick overview of the hearing procedure, and starting obviously at 5:30, we're on step number three where we're continuing with those that are interested in the application and any public agencies having an opportunity to provide testimony. And the board has set time limits for three minutes for the general public and 10 minutes for any agencies. After that, we'll move on to the applicant's rebuttal period, which will be 10 minutes, and then any closing remarks from staff. So for those that are joining in person, if there's anyone new, again, Commissioner Dare will call you up to the podium and the microphone to provide your testimony, and please state your first and last name and mailing address for the record. For those folks just tuning in, these are the links to our public hearing notice where you can find the Zoom link if you would like to join the meeting to provide testimony. And again, those joining us on Zoom currently are considered attendees where they are muted and they're not able to share their video, but once they are elevated to a panelist, they will be able to unmute and provide their testimony and share their video if they would like. And again, just a reminder that your testimony will be recorded. A couple tools for those on their computer, again, the mute button is on the bottom left hand of the black ribbon, and the stop and start video is right next to that. And then in the middle of the screen is the raise hand function, and that's what you'll use to notify our producer that you wish to provide your testimony tonight. And if there's anyone joining us via phone, those functions to mute and unmute are star six, and to raise your hand is star nine on your keypad. And so right at this time, if there are any folks on Zoom, you could select the raise hand button now, and anyone on the phone, you could press star nine, and I will get you lined up for the testimony portion. Again, we're hearing procedure, we're on step number two, starting with any new folks in person to provide testimony, then moving on to Zoom and phone, and then the applicant will have the opportunity for the rebuttal. If there are any folks that want to submit written testimony tonight, you can do that one of two ways. You can either hand your paperwork into our county administrator Nick Leelak at the front of the room, or you can provide that via email to my email address here listed on the screen. And please note that if your email submittal is more than 20 pages in length, includes any color figures that need to be printed in color, or documents larger than eight and a half by 11, we do ask that you provide a physical copy. That can be provided at a later date, and that can be delivered to the Community Development Department office at 117 Northeast Lafayette, just across the street from the county administrator's building. And quickly, just want to see if there are any folks joining us that object to the hearing format. Again, if you're in person, please raise your hand, or if you're joining us via Zoom, select the raise hand button or star nine. And I'll ask our producer Stephanie if we have any hands raised.
None.
Doesn't sound like it, okay. And with that, I'll now turn it back over to Commissioner Dare.
Okay, thank you so much Holly. All right, I do believe we are ready to continue with the public testimony at this time. Do we have anyone that has joined the audience in person that would like to testify? Has anyone joined us that wants to testify? Okay, Stephanie, you said there were a couple new people on Zoom.
There are. They want to raise their hand.
Yes, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom and you would like to testify at this time.
It doesn't look like it.
Nobody's raising their hand?
No.
Okay, all right, so, okay, being that that is the case then, it appears to be the time for rebuttal testimony, and I do want to acknowledge that the notice of the meetings was proper, and we will not have to meet again for public testimony per conversations with our legal Dave Doyle. So that's the good news. And Ken, would you care to do your rebuttal, and you remember how excellent our timers work? So I know that you have at least 10 minutes.
Or so. You know what, I'll try to keep it under 10, but I'm going to start my own timer, one second.
That's always a good idea.
For the record, Ken Katzroff here for the applicant. I'm going to provide rebuttal, there we go, as best I can. It sounds like we're going to leave the record open, so certainly we will address things more comprehensively in our written materials, which I assume we're going to be talking about next. I want to address a number of things, but I'm going to start with Commissioner Chang's comments at the end of the last portion of this hearing, which is in particular, large graze, wow, I cannot talk, I'm getting tired, large grazing, particularly in eastern Oregon. And we've actually directly addressed this question, and we did so at the hearings officer process, and we've gotten at least five expert ranchers who ranch in eastern Oregon, some of them, to say and to come to the property and say they would not add this to their ranching portfolio, just doesn't make sense for them to do so. That would be Jim Starwalt, Rand Campbell, Mr. Cyrus, Jim Mattis, and I think there's one more. So we've actually addressed this with particularity already. It's also important to remember that this particular property is bordered on a lot of sides by a bunch of BLM land, but that BLM land is not used for grazing, it's for an OHV recreational use. And so this property is really in quite isolation, and again, has significant topographical challenges in terms of connectivity. So I just, I want to say that we've addressed this, we will certainly direct the commission to those expert testimony pieces that we've got in our written submittals. I'm going to next go to Ms. Macbeth. Ms. Macbeth is crafting a new argument that for some reason you don't include the cost of land or the cost of the water or anything like that, that those are capital assets, and that somehow has some meaning. And I just have to say, that's pretty much directly what the Supreme Court rejected in the Weatherall case, and so we're not interpreting the law incorrect. We don't have a different view, per se, of it. Well, not true. We have a very different view of what the law is, and what we're applying is what the Supreme Court decided what the law means. And so I think it's important to note that every expense matters. And when we're talking about farming, we have to talk about for the primary purpose of attaining a profit, and that includes all pieces into that, the cost of the land, the cost of the dirt, I already said that, cost of water, cost of trucking, cattle feed in and out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That all matters when we're looking at this farm use under state law and what state law means for farm use. Talking about the cost of dirt, I want to address Mr. Buchanan's testimony, because it's great to hear from other people who are ranching in Deschutes County. But what I have to say is, you know, we heard testimony also from a realtor tonight that this particular property was on the market for nine years before our clients bought it in 2020. And I think it's important to note that, and this is already in the record, but the Buchanan's bought their property in 2014, and it's a non-farm dwelling. Okay, so this property sat on the market next to them for six years, and if they wanted to expand, they could have done so then. And let's be clear here, even if we're using the assessed value by the county's assessor for EFU land, it doesn't price in developer, or the potential to develop it with a rezone, it's just the assessed value by the county, we're still looking at assessed value of well over $2 million. We've also taken a look at the Buchanan's business plan that they provided, did that before this hearing, actually, and they're trying to find people to lease land to them, particularly dry land, both dry and irrigated. That's what's included in their business plan. And they actually say, this is how much we're willing to pay per head of cattle that you could support, and what they say is $28 a month per head of cattle. And so if you take the numbers that have been provided by the state for what you could make, how many cattle you could actually support on this property, taken by the state, that would provide a revenue, if we're going to lease it to the Buchanan's at $28 a head for dry land, of less than $2,000. So in a bad year and $4,000 in a good year. But again, the point is, is that you can't make money doing that. You can't do it for a profit. You can't even pay the taxes with that. And so even if we were to lease the entire property to help them increase their ranch supply, it just doesn't cut it. I feel for them, but we have to look at all of the inputs. That's what state law requires, and even using their business plan, there's just, there's no way to make it pencil. So even if they had purchased the property, it still isn't penciled under the numbers that the state provides. So I just, I just want to say that. I'd also point out that we have provided additional information about their particular cattle operation in the record, including Facebook posts for their business by the Buchanan's about how it's a money-losing enterprise, making fun of it, in fact. And so it's really interesting to have them come in and say, we want to grow our business, and yet their actual public persona is saying that they don't. So they don't, don't take it lightly to go after people with particularity, but I just think it's relevant, because that's testimony we heard today, and I want to respond to that. And we addressed it at the hearings officer level. Couple of other quick things. We will provide additional analysis related to potentially conflicts of grazing and wildlife, as well as building off of Mr. Raby's testimony about how thinning junipers is not going to increase productivity significantly. It still goes back to the base level numbers of the maximum amount of productivity that we can get on the NRCS based upon that science. So that's important. There were some questions about traffic and use of buckhorn or lower bridge. That's not what we're proposing. And even still, we specifically, excuse me, analyzed a traffic as if there was a 71-lot subdivision, and there's not, there is not a problem based upon the expertise of the traffic engineers and the county's transportation planner. And so if, in fact, there is a different access point or something else in the future is part of a subdivision, additional mitigation measures can be applied. Same thing with potential issues with water, et cetera. I understand that people are concerned about water, but the science is the science as to how water works here, and we've provided the science. And there's not going to be measurable interference based upon geosize analysis, which uses all of the modeling data from USGS and OWRD. I don't have a ton of time left. On the question of water, again, substantive, we can address this more comprehensively, including potentially restricting water use, but we have analyzed the worst-case scenario, and that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to give the county a picture of what's the worst-case scenario and how does that impact others. What else? Ms. Macbeth, I'm going to bet her real quick. There's a question of, well, what if you did things like egg or poultry production or lavender, et cetera? We've actually provided expert testimony on all of those issues. We heavily litigated this at the hearings officer and provided specific letters from people like lavender farms, people who produce eggs, poultry, et cetera. So we've actually addressed all of these potential other agricultural uses and shown why either that particular producer says, hey, no way, I can't make money here. I would not try to expand my operation to this piece of property. What you're doing is taking illogical conclusion, what you're doing is a better use, because I can't, I can't make a profit here, I can't, I can't make a farm use. So I think that's relevant, and all of this information is already in the record, and we're certainly going to direct the commission to all of that. But my point is, is we've done the work, okay? We've looked at what our potential farm use is, what our potential agriculture use is if we want to go broader. But at the end of the day, the state law test is whether or not you're doing one of those uses for the purpose of and actually making a profit. And what the experts say and what the evidence shows is we can't here, which means we believe it's perfectly reasonable to do what state law says, which is rezone out of resource land because it's not resource land. One other thing, somebody meant, two other things, real quickly. On the question of ADUs, this property would actually be precluded from ADUs under the state rules, and that's because it's not the way that the reason on the comp plan amendment happens, it's not entitled to use an ADU use. And all of the Senate bills, and we'll provide more briefing on this, but we actually can't do ADUs here, okay? And I think we've already dealt with that in the record, but we'll certainly provide the analysis again, but we can't do that. So when we say 71, we're really at 71, we're not at 142. So I just want to be clear there. And then my brain is going blank, I had one other thing.
You know what the reason the ADU is, would not be?
Yeah, one of the state rules that permits them is a particular type of exceptionary, and we don't qualify for it. We're just, what we're doing is saying we're not agricultural land, we're not taking an exception, because we don't need to.
Okay.
But we've provided the briefing on it, but we'll certainly tell you, we'll show you again. There's another thing that I wanted to hit, but I don't have it, and my time is up, so. Any questions?
You can include it in your rebuttal in the open record.
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So if you were farming this land claiming EFU tax deferral, what would the taxes be?
I have no idea, but we can certainly do that calculation or ask the assessor's office to look at it. I think we could certainly extrapolate from the property that was in deferral until 2014 and then was disqualified from it.
The 120-acre parcel?
I don't know how much it was, but sure.
It was.
Okay, 120-acre parcel. Because, you know, basically, you just get a reduction, I don't remember, state law's pretty clear on it, so it wouldn't be challenging. But again, your assessor is also supposed to use the definition of farm use in determining whether or not properties are available for farm use and farm deferral. And so there's many other counties in state of Oregon that actually go around and say, you're in farm deferral, you're not actually doing a farm use, commercial farm use for the profit of money, and so the county will pull them out of farm deferral. Deschutes County just doesn't do that at this point in time.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm more interested in what the taxes would be.
Sure.
As, as part of the whole picture of profitability.
Sure.
That's, you know, that, I don't want to dig in the assessor and the, you know, past deferrals and what have you. The, you know, I certainly have an understanding of the size of the groundwater resource in the region and, you know, the availability of water if you're willing to go deep and, you know, drill deep enough. I am curious, but, you know, that, that said, it doesn't mean that a new well has no impact. It has, it can have modest impact, but, you know, it's not like, it's not like there's unlimited water down there. So one of the things I would, I'm curious about, having heard some specific testimony about various people's depths of wells, what is your estimate of how deep the wells would be drilled for the 71 rural residential properties?
So it's a very good question. I don't remember what GSI assumed in the report, but I think it's a really relevant question, and one of the things that we've actually been talking about over the last, less than an hour since we broke, was how to address that differently. But I think what the report shows is this is the amount of water use, and this is how it impacts wells, and it takes a look at, I don't know how many, but a lot of well logs. It's not a short report. Well, that's not true. The text is pretty short, and the findings, conclusion, and the analysis is, but it provides all of the well logs that they're relying upon. And so it's something that we can hopefully provide you more information on, but it does assume at least the worst-case scenario without any sort of reduction that could be placed as a condition as part of a subdivision application, for example. So.
Okay. I would, I would love to have a kind of specific estimate of number, as well as the anticipated taxes under EFU tax deferral. You know, we heard from a neighbor or someone nearby, you know, 379-feet-deep well just went dry. So I mean, you know, the specific numbers would, would help inform the way we think about the water issues.
And I don't want to take issue particularly with that testimony, but I, but I would remind the commission that that was testimony from not that person. It was testimony from a real estate agent on behalf of somebody else. I don't think that's necessarily relevant, but if somebody is in fact having those issues, then substantial evidence in my mind is what's provided by testimony of the person, not the hearsay testimony.
Okay, you guys, you can get all legal. Yeah.
I heard that too. I have the email if you guys would like me to submit it to the record. I'm just going to say.
Okay, yeah, you guys can deal with all the lawyer stuff, I'm just trying to.
Understood.
To get to the bottom of the situation.
That was testimony from Diane Lizito.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Who also testified that they couldn't sell the land for nine years.
Right.
I guess my, my, my last question just kind of deals with the, you know, the expert rancher testimony that you received, you know, or the input you received into your application process. And I'm trying to hold that at the same time that, you know, we, we heard from a rancher in your immediate vicinity, you know, adjacent property, who, you know, whether they're losing money or not, you know, I don't know, but, but is certainly pursuing ranching with the intent of profitability. And so I guess, I would be curious how you assign weight to the perspective of an adjacent rancher who's actually, you know, you know, ranching comparable, comparable land right there to, you know, other experts from other parts of the state.
So I would, I would be clear here that the Buchanan's have, I didn't hear them testify that they have adjacent property that's similar state, and, and we dealt with this issue below. Let's be clear here, the Buchanan's have a groundwater irrigation right that allows them to grow their own feed and support some cattle on their property. And so it's a categorically different piece of property with, with bad soils, no water, et cetera. But your point's well taken, and some of the other testimony that we've received into this record from the other experts are from Deschutes County, some are from eastern Oregon, and we'll, at the end of the day, how do you weigh the evidence? That's, that's for the decision maker. And so you have to look at who you think is more credible or what the weight that you want to give, but that's at your discretion. I remembered the point that I wanted to make if I can have 30 seconds.
Help yourself.
Okay, sorry. The point that I wanted to make is that we had a couple of people bring up, the state had come in with a tri-state agency letter, and I think it's important to note that we addressed the state's letters at the hearings officer process, both at the hearing and after the hearing. DLCD then submitted one additional letter, and their only concern was that they didn't think we had met our burden with regards to forest land. We provided that information, and then they haven't provided testimony since then. And so they may still, and that's certainly their prerogative to do so, but at this point in time, it's equally reasonable to infer that we've addressed the concerns of the state. And so they, they've been noticed in the application, and they, they haven't participated yet. That doesn't mean they won't, but I just want to say that, you know, we went through a process, we addressed the concerns, they asked one more question, we also addressed that. I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, and I'm, I was puzzled that we didn't hear from one of the state agencies today besides Water Resources Department.
Any other questions for me?
No.
I appreciate your time.
No questions, just one follow-up. So Kyle Gorman sent us a note afterwards just for clarification, so his testimony wasn't showing support or opposition to the application, but he also used, you know, a statement in here that says, you know, talking about the big falls and the 2,000 acres and how he's just making generalization, but a nearby monitoring show, site that showed a modest decline of nine feet over 24 years. So he started off his testimony with, we have a very robust aquifer. So I think that, you know, that's our water expert, talking about a robust aquifer and a modest decline after 25 years and with high-volume pumping. So just, just putting in perspective what I think I heard there.
And I clarified it with him at the time, because I wanted to know, because I know we lost a lot of wells last year, and, you know, the piping definitely has been impactful to a lot of communities. So, you know, it's, it's probably going to continue on that, that level, and, you know.
But again, we need to go back to the, the Water Resources Department analysis of groundwater in this basin, which shows that five-eighths of the impact on it in terms of groundwater level declines is, is drought-related, maybe two-eighths is because of wells competing against wells, and maybe one-eighth in a very, in a very localized way, and that doesn't mean that, that those impacts aren't real, but they're, they're highly localized, the impacts of canal piping on, on certain shallow groundwater wells.
Okay. So, Ken, you're done?
I'm done, but I'm going to stay up here in the event we have a discussion about record period.
Okay.
There was a request for keeping.
Keep it, the written open for, what, seven days?
Your typical, typical practice would be 777, and that I would think would be adequate for the folks.
That would be good, and when does that, when does 21 days end up, though?
I think the only question is, and Holly is available, we've just been coordinating on this, just given that the Labor Day holiday is right in the middle, and it's in the heart of a lot of people taking vacations and whatnot, I just want to make sure that we, we do have adequate time for everybody. So I don't have a proposal, I just.
Labor Day's in September, I believe, the first week.
It always is, it's the fifth.
Right, and so the only thing that that impacts, the only thing that impacts is the applicant's final legal argument, and we're not going to raise issue with that.
Yes, because one week from now, and then two weeks from now, and then that would be the third week.
Yeah, one week from now would be, seven days for anybody to submit anything would be till the, I believe, the 24th.
Correct.
Then seven days for anybody to submit anything in rebuttal would take you to the 31st.
Correct.
And then, yes, the applicant-only, written argument-only would, would go through the Labor Day weekend, and they're indicating that's not a concern. So staff would certainly support the 777.
Okay, so do we have determined date then when we'll come back?
You can at this point. You can at this point, or...
I mean, would that be best?
I mean, if you did, that takes you to that first week in September, and if you wanted a week or two to digest it...
Right, because we're not meeting on the 14th. So, the 21st.
First or 28th would be when you'd want to be back to deliberate.
Okay.
I see Haley up there, I don't know if that...
Is it Haley or Holly?
Hallie.
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 That comports with her...
Hallie!
Yeah, Joel, she's the important person. She's the staff planner on it.
So, Haley, what's better for you, the 21st or the 28th of September?
Either of those are fine with me. Yeah.
Okay.
Just make sure, yeah, those are fine.
Could we do, oh, could we do the 28th of September? I do have a commitment in the middle of the day on the 21st.
There is, isn't, isn't there a week where we're not meeting?
That's the 14th.
At the end of the week, okay.
That's the week of the 14th. So, thank goodness for the Pendleton roundup. At least, maybe I'm going to get to, leave Deschutes County for a day, go to the roundup. Okay.
So, then if you're inclined to do that, I would suggest you close the oral portion of the public hearing tonight, indicate that the record's going to be held open for that 777 period we just described, and that the board will plan to deliberate on the 28th of September.
Okay. So said, thank you. Closing the oral record at this moment. We will leave the written record open until the 17th.
24th.
24th, excuse me, the 24th, because it is the 17th today, isn't it?
On the screen now.
Yes. Oh, thank you, you are so fast. Rebuttal can come in by the 20, the 31st, by 4:00 p.m. Remember, it's 4:00 p.m. Don't email it at 4:00 p.m., because it, a lot of times, circles, goes to Connecticut and doesn't make it here. And...
Take five minutes, yeah.
Yeah, it does. It's just like the mail service. And then the final argument will be the 7th, September 7th. So, and then we'll have our final hearing with our deliberations on the 28th. Does that sound fair to everyone? Great.
Could I just...
Your choice.
Thank you so very much. Let's...
Haley was trying to say something.
Oh, Haley, do you need something?
I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to reiterate all the dates I've got up here on the screen, and then my next screen, I just wanted to remind folks again, for open record submittals, email submittals is fine, but again, if they exceed 20 pages, or if they need to be printed in color, or printed larger than eight and a half by 11, we ask that folks drop off a physical copy. And then we aren't able to take downloads from a cloud service or cloud storage base. So, again, please just attach the document. And then, like Commissioner Adair mentioned, we need to receive that by email by 4:00, and in-person by 4:00 on the date of the specific deadline. So, and I've got those dates back up on the screen, and that's, yeah, that's all for me.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you today. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here at Deschutes County. Thank you, everyone. So, Stephanie, I believe we can now adjourn our meeting.